Good evening. Good evening, everybody. The Sacramento City Council will now come to order with a clerk. Please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Ashby.
Here.
Warren, Harris, Hanson, Chenier, Gera, Jennings, Carr, and Mayor Steinberg.
Here.
We do have a quorum, and this meeting is broadcast live this evening, and there's a replay on Saturday at 7:00 PM on Metro Cable Channel 14 if you would like to see it that way. If you have a cellphone, please turn it to the silent position. Speaker slips are located on the back shelf. If you'd like to speak, please complete one and turn it in to the assistant clerk at the front. We have cordless microphones and assisted listening devices should anyone require one. And in addition, I would like to encourage everyone to check out our new e-comment announcement section on our webpage if you wish to comment on agenda items. There's an easy way to do that by the click of a button, and it feeds right into the system, is always live and available for all the members. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, I would like to ask, if she'd be willing, Betty Williams, the new president of the NAACP, to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Allegiance, everyone, please rise. Where's Betty? You here? Come on! You're not president.
(inaudible)
But allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Congratulations, Betty, and we look forward to working with you on many things.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry to surprise you.[122.75][122.75](Laughter). We had no closed session today, so assume that there would be no report then. Let us begin tonight. I'll make a few introductory comments in a moment, but let us start with a presentation. Councilmember Hanson, I think you had an introduction that you wanted to make here.
At the pleasure of the mayor. You can go first or second.
Go ahead. My people are here, yeah.
Okay. Well, we have a special guest in the House, somebody who I've had the pleasure to serve on the Local Government Commission Board with, Councilmember Pam O'Connor from Santa Monica. She served as mayor. Pam, if you want, stand up and wave.
Welcome.
She just got elected today as Chair of the Local Government Commission.[166.23][166.23](Applause). Pam's a powerhouse in Southern California, having chaired SCAG and LA Metro for numerous times as well as being mayor. We're lucky to have her visit us and come check out our chambers, and congratulations on becoming Chair of the Local Government Commission.
Just saw Pam back in Washington, DC two nights ago as well. Welcome to you, so glad you're here. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Harris, are your folks here? Should we?
They are not here yet, so we can wait.
Want to wait?
But, you know, when people are...
(inaudible).
Mike, you here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, great. Didn't see you back there. Excellent.
Okay, Councilmember Harris, this is a special presentation. Take it away.
Well, it's with great pleasure that I offer this resolution to you. It celebrates the 20th anniversary of HomeAid Sacramento. So for those of you who don't know, HomeAid is a branch of the North State Building Industry Association, and what they do is work with service providers who work with homeless and people with mental disabilities, and they build facilities for them to aid them in their work. It's exactly the kind of thing that we need in Sacramento to assist us with our efforts to move through the homeless situation and create permanent solutions. So I'm going to read a couple of things about what they have accomplished over these 20 years, and it's really pretty dramatic, as you'll see. So in two decades of operation, HomeAid Sacramento has completed 73 projects, which have provided 769 beds for its housing partners. HomeAid Sacramento's transitional housing facilities have housed nearly 10,000 homeless families and individuals, including victims of domestic violence, pregnant teens, abused and abandoned children, at-risk and runaway teens, medically fragile infants, families experiencing a temporary job loss, and victims of natural disasters and other catastrophes, and returning veterans. So you can see how vital the work that they do is and what it really means to our communities. So this is, you know, a private entity really giving back to the community, and that's what makes Sacramento really great, because we have a lot of people who give back to the community. HomeAid Sacramento has assisted local shelter organizations by renovating and building facilities to serve the homeless. Without HomeAid Sacramento assistance and its home builder partners, these organizations would have to dedicate more resources to construction activities and therefore sacrifice social programs and services for the families and individuals in crises. So now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Sacramento that we hereby extend our sincere congratulations and join in recognizing the 20th anniversary of HomeAid Sacramento, the charitable arm of the North State Building Industry Association. One last comment. I've been a builder my whole life. I've been a general contractor for over 35 years now, and I couldn't be more proud of the people in that industry than honoring HomeAid Sacramento for their charitable giving to Sacramento. So would you all come down to the podium?
Give them a hand, please.[380.13][380.13](Applause).
Would you like to say some words? I'd really like to have somebody speak.
All right. Beth, how do you do?
Pleasure.
Oh, okay.
Please.
We would like to thank the city council very much. My name is Beth King. I'm the executive director of HomeAid Sacramento, and I have the privilege of representing the very generous work of the members of the North State Building Industry Association and their trade and business partners. We've been able to leverage over $7.2 million in in-kind resources to help to build housing for the homeless. Our emphasis is on dignified housing, and with the pressing matters that are before many, many communities today, we think that we are a perfect partner going forward to be ready to help deliberate on the solutions that are needed to resolve some very difficult problems, to find places of shelter immediate, emergency, and long-term for families and individuals experiencing homelessness. And we'd really like to thank you, and I just want to say that the individuals that we have here, we have Bill Neme, who is one of our co-founders of our chapter. We're one of 17 chapters in metropolitan areas across the country of HomeAid America. We will have, by the end of this year, we will have over 1,000 beds that we will be offering in the community. Kevin Carson with the New Home Company is our chair this year. We also have John Orr, who is another one of our co-founders. I think many of you know him. Jeff Pembstein's been one of our board members. He's also with the California Building Industry Association this year as their president. Mike Stretch, the CEO of the Building Industry Association. Doyle Hedrick with Production Framing, former board member. Chris Norm with the BIA as well. So we'd really like to thank you, and we stand ready to support and help us going forward.
Well, you're, I just want to say, this congratulatory resolution is very timely, and I thank you, Councilmember Harris, and thank you to all of you who work so hard to provide shelter, both temporary and permanent, for so many people. We congratulate you, but we also say to you, we need you now more than ever. This council is grappling with these sets of issues with an even greater sense of urgency, as is the county, and so enjoy the resolution, but we're going to be calling on you again very soon, okay? Thank you.
(inaudible).
I'm sorry.[553.32][553.32](Laughter).
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.[560.16][560.16](Applause). Do it again. Okay, bye-bye.
Thank you so much.
We are going to be calling on you. Okay, thank you. All right, let us now move to the consent calendar. Are there any items on the consent calendar that any member wants to note or take off? I know we have nine members of the public who want to testify on items relating to the consent calendar. I want to note one thing, and that is Steve Hanson, I know you and others, but I know you especially have been working very hard on this Vision Zero goal to eliminate traffic fatalities. So you're going to talk about, so I'm introducing you. Yes, I just, yes, I want to thank you for your work on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a great kickoff to Vision Zero earlier, late last year, when we, as a council, asked our staff to move forward on it. Vision Zero is this idea that we want to make the road safe for everyone. It's not just changing the infrastructure, it's changing our culture so that we treat each other well, whether you're walking, biking, driving, you pay attention, you know that you can harm other people just as much as you can be harmed. And I want to thank Jerry Way, who's come back as a retired Newton to help with the city, but he was our Public Works Director, and he said, "We really need to do this." And obviously, I care a lot about biking and walking and changing the streets, but what I really am proud of is not only our staff and the work they've done to bring this to us tonight, item 13, but also Mr. Mayor. As I look around the table, there's not one council member here that doesn't want our streets to be safe, more bike lanes, better connectivity. And a report just came out from Smart Growth America called Dangerous by Design, and one of the things I'm really cognizant of is the center of our city, our central city, is doing well on many of these metrics, and we can certainly do better, but the other parts of our city, in the north and the south, and other parts of our region desperately need to be safer for people who want to get around. It seems like almost weekly, if not more often, we see a story about somebody hit in a crosswalk, a bicyclist that was in a fatal accident, and just people driving distracted and making very poor decisions. And I know our communities want safer streets, and so I just want to thank the council for your work and support for moving this forward.
Good. Thank you very much, Councilmember Hanson. We do have a number of members of the public on various items, so surely if we can call up and reference the item that the public is going to speak about, that'd be terrific.
Okay, so we have items 1 through 14 on the consent calendar. I do need to read a couple of things before we start with the speakers. Item number two has been withdrawn, and so that is going to come back to us at a later date. Item number seven has an amendment to the resolution. Under Section D, it says two-year, and it should say one-year. So those are the changes that I have, and now we'll go to the speakers. We have two speakers for item number five. It's Pastor Gainesbrough and David Andre. And item number five is the purchase of the firefighter structured turnout coats and pants. So Pastor?
Again, I know there's going to be a lot of public comment on matters relating to police and matters relating to the homeless issue, and we will have plenty of opportunity for that, so let's just make sure that this portion of the agenda, that the testimony's relevant to the consent items. Pastor?
Mayor Steinberg and the city council. Item number five, contract purchase of firefighter structured turnout coats and pants. Recommendation to pass a motion awarding a contract of $1,761,000 for the total life of the contract. It doesn't tell us exactly what the turnout coats are and pants, but whatever the best equipment that our firefighters can have, that money can buy, we need to provide it. I'm totally in favor of that. In fact, before we were blessed by your new mayorship here, I spoke for the police and said that not only should they have a commensurate increase, but their salaries should be equal to Roseville and Rockland, where we're losing police officers, for better pay there. So I don't want to be misunderstood in what else I'm saying. Last night, Michael Nunez...
Pastor?
Died outside on the sidewalk of City Hall with apparently no police to take him to a hospital or to a shelter while there were 20 police down with some of our homeless friends at L. and 5th Street.
Pastor?
And I know this doesn't seem...
Hold on, hold on. I'm going to give you every opportunity to make public comment on the tragedy last night, and I want to talk about it, too. But again, we're going to try to maintain both an openness here, but we're going to run the meetings efficiently, and so this is not relevant to item five around firefighter structured turnout coats and pants.
All right, let me just...
So I'm going to ask you to stop...
Okay.
And to come back when it's appropriate to talk about that item. Thank you, sir. Who's next?
Okay, David Andre, the same item.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Like the Reverend said, there's not a whole lot of description if these are the finest turnout coats and pants that we can procure, if that's a really reputable contractor that uses union labor and pays union wages. I would like to see that. And having been, had my own butt saved by the fire department before, I would like to make sure that our firefighters have the latest, most advanced gear that a municipality that's a state capital of California can afford. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next speaker then is Charles Duckworth. Item number six, it's a Sacramento City Code relating to park use regulations for Del Paso Regional Park.
I get his one minute and a half, too? Oh, you're cutting me short. Hey, I want to thank you guys for the important environmental move that you are restricting the natural habitat from public use. This is what a natural habitat is supposed to look like. This, I could show you more pictures, is what is happening to the natural habitat within Del Paso Park because of the misuse of the park. We have gross, what's the word I'm looking for? It's falling apart, anyway. It's falling into the creek, and I've probably written most of you about that, and maybe you've read it. Tim Valinsky wrote a letter objecting to three points of the new amendment. The first is that it lists the park as 530, or excuse me, that it's off by 535 acres. So while we support this and we want to get it passed tonight, we do need to recognize that that needs to be changed so that the proper acreage of the park is listed in the amendment. Secondly, well, there's a couple other things that are less important. For me, I didn't get time to write them down. For me, the most important thing is that we get this acreage of the park corrected so that it doesn't create confusion in the future.
Thank you. Seth, we should get back to the gentleman at some point on that question, whether the acreage is described appropriately.
It's originally described in the 1985 master plan. I'll let it go.
No, no, go, go.
If you want me to answer it. Cheryl Patterson, senior deputy city attorney, I drafted the ordinance. What's in the staff report was just quoted from the original master plan. Yes, the park had more acreage. It has nothing to do with the ordinance itself.
I agree.
Okay.
Just a little bit of...
Clarified.
An amendment should be made somewhere.
Learn something every day. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next.
Okay, our next speaker is Mac Worthy, and this is item number eight. It's the Methodist Hospital Police Security Services. Following Mac, we will have three speakers, and then we are done with consent.
On this item, people, we see why the city can't grow, because they want to regulate everything. Methodist Hospital, as other hospitals here, except UC Davis, is private property. That's where your security force, if people got security, can come in and get those contracts. But you see why that you have the situation you have. Now, both of those structures got different square footages, but both of them price is the same, 302,000. People, I don't know what you're trying to do, but you're misleading people. We have to offset government jobs with private sector. This is the reason we are happy to see President Trump coming in, that we bring these things true. Now, other hospitals, where my insurance, where I go, I'm going to bring it to the staff myself. And so, look, now, this is outrage where you're going to spend this money, 300-some-thousand for two policemen? What the police make? It's you. It's not the police department. You can free those two police up, and there'd be someone else. But it's you. Come to Jim Farnes, who making the money? Public people, you see, who have the benefit to the city instead of you all? That's not safety. On the campus or any private property, a police can't do no more than an individual can do that knows something about the law, to respect the person and call the officer. You call him to come, he's after the facts. If they go, a criminal in the hospital, they will dispatch a police to that room. Own the police budget. This is from the FBI agent down to your city. Wake up, people. Quit abusing people because they are not. This is not just black. This is across the board in this town, because the majority of the people here came here under military, they knows nothing about the private sector. That's the reason this city is behind, is behind, and it will always be behind.
Thank you.
Okay, so our last three then for item number 13 is Jim Brown, Corinne Kumar, and Walt Seifert. Jim?
Item number 13 is the Vision Zero goal to eliminate traffic fatalities and serious injuries.
Mayor Steinberg and council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the resolution. Improving roadway safety is the key to realizing the environmental, health, and economic benefits of bicycle transportation. These are benefits that touch the entire community. Surveys conducted in Portland and other major U.S. cities show that a large proportion of residents are ready to use a bicycle for everyday transportation but won't ride because they don't feel safe. In Portland, those interested but concerned residents outnumber existing bicyclists by more than five to one. Sacramento's goals of achieving cleaner air, healthier residents, and the best access to opportunity depend on giving everyone more and better transportation options. Making our roads safer for everyone, bicyclists, pedestrians, and drivers, is where we need to start. We applaud the city's ongoing work to implement Vision Zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Corinne?
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the council. I want to congratulate staff and the council on making this momentous step forward in enhancing safety on our streets. My name is Corinne Kumar. I'm the executive director of WAC Sacramento. Our work is to advance health, safety, sustainability, and quality of life here in Sacramento by looking at the land use and transportation planning processes that shape our neighborhoods. In order to, like Jim said, in order to meet our city and region's economic, health, environment, and equity goals, we must take bold steps now to ensure safety on all of our streets and in all of our communities. Bold steps like not only creating a culture of safety in our communities, but within the agencies and departments that are responsible for building our communities and maintaining safety. Bold steps like prioritizing funding and attention in disadvantaged communities, where higher-speed arterials are disproportionately responsible for the deaths of those who are the most dependent on walking, biking, and transit. Studies have shown that one of the most important factors contributing to one's ability to move into the next socioeconomic level is access to quality transportation. In order to make Sacramento the truly first-class city we know it can be, we must take these critical steps towards zero. Zero, which is an extremely ambitious goal, is only possible if we are ready to prioritize not only the movement of cars, but the movement of people on our streets. Finally, I will end, or I will end by pointing out that this is as much a safety approach as it is a public health approach. With rates of obesity, asthma, and other chronic diseases related to inactivity skyrocketing in our communities, it is vital that we create opportunities for regular physical activity, like walking and biking, by making even our most car-centric roads safer than the most, safest for the most vulnerable users. The last thing I will point out is that there's, across the country where we're talking about Vision Zero, there is really a movement to shift away from using the term accident to collision. These are not accidents, these are preventable deaths on our streets. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening. I'm Walt Seifert. I'm a member of your Bicycle Advisory Committee. A while back, the Bicycle Advisory Committee recommended that both the city and county adopt Vision Zero programs. Jim Brown already talked about some of the reasons, but essentially bicyclists and pedestrians are disproportionately the victims in traffic crashes. I wanted to thank you all for acting on this. I wanted to especially thank Councilmember Hanson for being the champion on the council, and to Jerry Way, and Hector Barone, and Jennifer Donlin for their leadership and involvement. I also wanted to mention a related issue. Your Bicycle Advisory Committee also recommended that the city support automated speed enforcement, which is currently illegal in the state of California. There is legislation moving to have a pilot program in a couple cities. It'd be great if the city supported that legislation and maybe even considered being one of the pilot cities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for your leadership over the years on this issue, Walt. Appreciate it. All right, is there a motion on the consent calendar? So moved by Councilmember Hanson, seconded by Councilmember Harris. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Abstain. Consent calendar passes. Let us move now to the discussion items on the agenda. Members, hold on one sec if I may. That's okay. We're still rehearsing here. Yeah, yeah. We have items 15 and 16. Members, as promised, every week over the first 10 to 12 weeks during the beginning of my term here, we want to have a different theme that highlights our city's priorities. Several weeks ago, of course, we had a long discussion, took action on transparency and ethics. Last week, we began to address arts, innovation, and technology in our modern economy. And by the way, none of these agenda items or meetings are the finish of anything, just the beginning of teeing up these ideas. Tonight is law enforcement, and tonight there's an opportunity for us to take stock of what we have done and where we still need to go. And I want to begin by commending Councilmember Carr, Jennings, and the other members of the council who worked so hard before I got here on a whole series of measures that lay a foundation for what we want to talk about here tonight. The use of force policy, the release of video evidence, the police commission issues. There's a lot of work left to do on all of it. And of course, it's not the end of the discussion, it's only the beginning, with our law enforcement community and with our community. Tonight, we want to get updates on where we are on all these items, an update on the process for the hiring of a permanent police chief. And then in item 16, we're going to take, I hope, genuine action around ensuring that Sacramento is on the forefront of training our officers in how to de-escalate, better de-escalate crisis situations involving people dealing with mental health issues and or substance abuse issues. None of this is the end, but it's, like what you did in November, a very strong beginning as we continue to try to build the kind of police-community relations that we all want to see. So let us begin with item 15, and I turn it over to city manager Howard Chan.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the council. Howard Chan, your interim city manager. I want to take this opportunity to provide you an update on the status of our police chief recruitment, the Office of Public Safety Accountability, or OPSA, and our community policing efforts. So as you're aware, my office initiated an RFP process, a request for proposal process, late last year to select a firm to help us with the recruitment of this key position for our city. The process yielded three firms that responded to the recruitment, and these proposals, however, did not include the robust community outreach that we required in the RFP. We subsequently went back out to these firms and asked for their background and experience in conducting this type of outreach, and fortunately, the responses we received did not meet the requirements of the RFP, and therefore were rejecting all the bids in favor of contracting with another firm that we've worked with in the past. And the firm's name is Ralph Anderson. for our city. The process yielded three firms that responded, responded to the recruitment. And these proposals, however, did not include the robust community outreach that we required in the RFP. We subsequently went back out to these firms and asked for their background and experience in conducting this type of outreach. And fortunately, the responses we received did not meet the requirements of the RFP and therefore were rejecting all the bids in favor of contracting with another firm that we've worked with in the past. And the firm's name is Ralph Anderson and Associates, and they have recently conducted two high-profile recruitments for police chief in San Francisco and in Oakland. In addition to the robust community outreach process they used in both those cities, we are also going to be asking Ralph Anderson to conduct focus group meetings with key stakeholder groups internally and externally. This is in addition to the outreach we did in November with these community safety forums where we received, you know, well over a hundred and twenty-five responses to what folks wanted to see in our next police chief. We're also going to prepare a survey to be widely distributed in multiple languages to include Mong, Spanish, Tagalog, Chinese, Vietnamese, as additional ways to engage our community in dialogue about what they hope to see in their next police chief. Survey will also be distributed internally to our police department to gain an internal perspective on what the next chief needs to look like. We'll also take the extra step, and this is the learning we've done as part of these public safety forums, we're going to take out radio and television spots to engage those communities that don't necessarily have access to computers and the internet. And so, we anticipate this process originally to be finished in April or May, but because of, you know, the minor delay here, we're anticipating to finish it in May-June timeframe. I'm going to stop there and ask, answer any questions you might have before I go on to the update for the Office of Public Safety and Accountability.
Questions, members of the council? Council member Jennings, Vice Mayor Jennings?
Thank you very much, mayor. You just mentioned about the different ways that you're going to do the outreach, and you talked specifically about radio and television spots. And I just wanted to know if that's exclusively radio and television? Are we going to expand that to our newspapers and our local newspapers and areas that get to the public that may be older, who read the paper every single day and still do that? Are we going to be able to use social media as far as outreach is concerned as well? I just want to kind of know, are we exclusively radio and television? Are we going to expand beyond that?
No, it's going to be all media, but those are the two medias that we talked about in the public safety forums I wanted to include. We're in the process of working out the plan with Ralph Anderson. In fact, we had a meeting today to talk about what this looks like and to lay out the forums and the focus group meetings.
Okay. And that also includes things like neighborhood associations, neighborhood watch groups, other areas as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I think one thing that would be helpful, Howard, would be to come back to the city council on a regular basis around the process as it is eventually defined, but also to give the council feedback on what we're hearing out in the community. I expect the members, including myself, will be at a lot of these community forums. But I think to bring it back here, recognizing that under the city charter, it's ultimately a city manager decision. It is a major decision for our city. Have great faith in you. But I do think as part of that process, we ought to come back here intermittently to essentially talk about how it's going and have a public discussion here about what we're hearing from the community.
Sure, absolutely.
Council member Ashby?
Thank you, mayor. So first of all, Howard, in your team, I want to compliment you on taking that additional step to reject previous bids and make sure that we had a contractor who would do what this city wants to do, which is robust outreach to the community. I think that's incredibly important, and thank you for doing that in response to what this council has asked in the past. I want to echo some of the comments of Vice Mayor Jennings. I know that you will use newspaper and print, but I want to encourage you to, we have fallen down in the past in making sure that we reach groups that we sometimes don't reach, so I want to make sure we use publications like The Observer or local neighborhood groups like N Magazine or Inside Publications in The Pocket and East Sac and Land Park, and that we make sure we're on Univision and that this is available in multiple languages and that we're doing as much robust outreach as we can in that community input piece that we reach beyond what we normally get for folks that are showing up. I'm looking, by the way, at Arturo over your right shoulder, who's nodding his head. Yeah, he's got it. And I just want to make sure, since he's new to Sacramento, that you'll help him identify those organizations that will help us be sure that we reach as far as we possibly can in social media and wherever we can be helpful as council members. And then lastly, I just would like to take one moment to say that I've been very impressed with our interim chief, Brian Louie. I think he's doing an exceptional job for the men and women in the police department. Very proud of them and very grateful for your leadership right now, chief. And I think we owe you a debt of gratitude to seeing us through this phase of the city's journey, so thank you for being that for us.
Council member Carr?
I just want to build a little bit on the two previous comments. It's not only the Mong and the Vietnamese and Hispanic radio stations that we need to reach out to. We also, we need to reach out to some of the African-American radio stations. And Howard, I would encourage Arthur Anderson to hire people from this community to help with outreach, because they don't know the community that well. It's important that we have people who actually live here, who are engaged in the community, who may not be in a neighborhood association or an elected position, who know their communities, and they would know the best way to get ahold of their communities.
Absolutely. You know, in fact, if I might, we may engage the group that helped set up these public safety forums for us. They had a really good tie into the community and gave a lot of insight into those forums, and so we may have them help Ralph Anderson in that regard.
All right. Let's, why don't you move on to the Office of Public Safety Accountability, please?
So following the council actions taken on November 29th, the director for OPSA has started to update our office and to take steps to form the Sacramento Police Review Commission. OPSA initiated the recruitment process fairly recently and expects to get staff on in the coming months. And that's going to be up to three individuals, and funding for those positions will be form part of the mid-year seventeen budget. The OPSA office will also physically move out of my office and the city manager's office to Historic City Hall and share office with the treasurer. The Sacramento Police Review Commission will begin accepting applications during the month of March. Candidate interviews will be conducted during the month of April. New commissioners will be confirmed in May with the first meeting scheduled for June 12th. And OPSA is currently working on the process and training and presentation schedule for the new commission. And our director, I'd be remiss if I didn't introduce Francine Turner. She's here to answer any questions about that particular process, but we walked through that with the Public Safety Subcommittee as we're holding these public safety forums. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Council member Ashby?
Yeah. So then, help me out here. The new process has us selecting, right? So there'll be a timeframe for us that you need action from each council member to make a selection?
Yes, that is correct, Council member Ashby. So basically, I've been working closely with the clerk's office, and it's set to open on March the first, which is a Wednesday. There'll be a thirty-day period. It'll close Friday, the thirty-first. But prior to the opening, I'll come and talk to each of the council members directly to just prepare them for the process, for their interviewing or whatever else. The criteria as it stands right now is that the person merely needs to be a resident of the city of Sacramento, not a current or previous law enforcement officer, and not a current city employee. So there could be a lot of applications that comes in, so I'll work with all of you individually.
And the P and PE committee will interview? No?
No.
Can you explain for?
Yes. So the way that it's set now, there'll be a thirty-day period where there'll be an opening. It will close. The council members will have approximately a month to go through the process of looking at all of their candidates and interviewing the ones that they see appropriate. After, right around the end of April, I will be given, or the list will be given to the clerk's office, and two weeks later, there will be an appointment. After that, there'll be the confirmation with the mayor, and then they will basically start their meeting on June the 12th.
But I think what he's asking you is to go over the composition, because previously we had a couple of at-large positions, and those no longer exist on the new body, correct?
So the mayor has three to appoint. They still have to be city residents, so I don't know if they're technically considered at-large. I guess he could choose from any district.
Well, they're not going to go to P and PE.
No.
So they're not at-large.
Council member gets one, the mayor gets three, as I understand it.
Right. But that's not going to go through P and PE, so we'll each have to complete that process by your deadline to make sure that you have a committee. And have the current members been informed of that timeframe and given some opportunity to let, apply for the positions to the council members' offices?
So I've been in touch with the current members. The timeframe was just somewhat solidified just recently. My plan currently is to meet with the current commission as groups of two, to not violate any Brown Act issues, and to work closely with those who are interested in applying again. And to also talk about them, about the process that they went through as a commissioner, to see if they felt that their learning curve was valid the way that we set it up, because a lot of what they learned or what they did, I want to learn from some of the past practices and move that into the next commission going forward to improve it.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Carr?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This was a matter of a lot of discussion when we were putting this together. And one concern that we had for each council member appointing a person in their district is that acting alone in our silos, we would, could possibly end up with a commission that didn't represent the diversity of the city. So the solution that we chose was to have the mayor appoint three people.
Great solution, by the way.
And I don't know how that's going to work with the timeframe of all of us appointing individually, but I would very much like for you to see who has been appointed before you make your selections.
I can certainly do that. I think it's a wise idea, sure, to make sure that my appointees are complimentary, if you will, or fill gaps, or I get what you're saying, that makes a lot of sense. Council member Schneer?
Thank you, mayor. I'm just still a little confused to follow up on council member Ashby's comment. So when we appoint parks commissioners, I bring a nominee, we put him on the agenda, and we're done. So we've added a whole piece here of review by someone else before it comes to the council member, or I'm just not clear. It seems we've added, you agree? Yeah, I think we've added a whole extra step here, which, not sure, and, well, tell me.
I will defer to the clerk, because she knows all.
She does know all. Don't ever forget that.
Okay, so we're almost there. It's almost there. When the applications are received by the members, they are the ones then who nominate, if you will, that's the term we use, the one that they wish to be appointed. All of those are collected and put on one agenda and read, like we do at the end of our meetings for appointments, by district, those members that are being nominated. The following week, it comes back on the consent calendar for confirmation, and a district specific with the three for the mayor that then affirms it.
I understand that. That's not my question. My question precedes that, that I was hearing that there's some process that will come? No.
I think what I heard is that the office is willing to assist the members in
Right.
in vetting applications and that sort of thing. That's the way I heard it.
So you're not taking unsolicited applications? If someone in my district, they should contact me if they're interested in this position?
No.
Yes.
Yes. I'm just...
More confused now, I'm sorry.
No, that's right. We have to make it clear that people who want to apply, apply to the individual council member and/or to the mayor. And maybe we can set it up so that if you receive an application, you obviously check the address, you pass it on to the member. It's simple. But let's make sure that people know to direct to the member and to the mayor's office. But if an application gets filed anywhere within the city, the city then sends it to the appropriate person, and then the member has the discretion to vet, determine who you want to interview, and I'll wait, if you will, as council member Carr suggested, until we see your recommendations and...
So this period of March 1st to March 30th, I mean, I would recommend that if folks want to apply, they should apply in District Five if they live there, to my office, not to you, or not to...
The clerk's office.
Wondering where?
Okay. My understanding was that the clerk's office was somewhat of the clearinghouse for all of the applications, but if it goes directly to...
It's just different than parks. I'm just trying to figure out where, for example.
Let's clarify this again. I think there can be multiple portals, as long as the applications get to the member. That's the key.
So basically, from my responsibility in appointing the District Five rep would be by March 30th? Did I get that name to the clerk's office?
End of April.
End of April, whatever the date is. So that's, okay. And is there a specific application that you're putting together for this?
Yes.
So you'll get those to us, so if we want people to fill them out and go forward? Okay, thank you.
So it would be helpful, I think, to the public and any new members to hear a little bit about the additional staff and what the council decided back in November about the authority of the commission here, what it is the commission is intended to do. We've had some very public incidents that have been well-reported. Is the commission going to be tasked with looking at whether protocol was followed, training and otherwise for those particular incidents? Is it going to be more policy, broader policy-based? Fill us in here on how the function itself of the office and the commission is going to change.
So in comparison to the current commission, to the proposed commission or the new commission that will start as of June 1st, the current commission that we have did not have the review function specific to particular incidents. The Office of Public Safety Accountability always did have the ability to look into complaints against the police, so the nuance to this particular new commission is that the office will work very closely with the commission to ensure that they're aware of any type of statistical data. It will not be specific to complaints, but just an overview quarterly of the type of trends of complaints or issues that are going forward, so that that commission can be well-informed to make policy and procedure recommendations. So people can, the community members can come forward to the new commission to make complaints. Those complaints will be filled through OPSA and also through Internal Affairs to come back with data regarding the overall complaints in that general timeframe. But there are particular parts of information because of police officer bill of rights that cannot be shared if it's part of personnel files or anything else, but as much as OPSA can share, will be shared with the commission and the community.
Good, thank you. Howard, any other part of your presentation?
No, actually, I'm going to invite Chief Louie up here to provide the update on the community policing.
Very good. Chief Louie, come on up. Let me back up council member Ashby's point, think you're doing an outstanding job. Thank you.
So good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the council, Mr. City Manager, Madam Clerk, Brian Louie, your interim police chief. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to give you an update on what's going on within the organization and specifically our community policing efforts. If you talk about community policing as defined, you can talk to three different people and get three different responses and different interpretations of it. So I figured I'd start off with the Department of Justice's definition of office of community-oriented policing. It's generally broken down into three main areas, three parts. Community partnerships, which really means law enforcement in the community developing solutions, but most importantly, building trust. The second one is organizational transformation, is just making sure that management and the organizational structure that supports those partnerships and problem-solving. And the third one itself is problem-solving, having a systematic examination of problems, but developing and evaluating solutions and responses, basically the CERA model, as most of us recall, the scanning, analysis, response, and assessment. But my interpretation is actually pretty simple. We continually work with our communities to identify and solve problems. A little bit of where we've been to understand community policing in Sacramento. As you can see, we, in the early 1990s, we had a pretty robust POP program, Problem-Ordering Policing Program. Neighborhood police officers back in the early 90s also. Back when Chief Arturo Venegas arrived in Sacramento, he decided that a new mission statement was... Arturo Venegas arrived in Sacramento, he decided that a new mission statement was in order for the Sacramento Police Department. As you can see, the mission of Sacramento Police Department is to work in partnership with the community to protect life and property, to solve neighborhood problems, and enhance the quality of life in our city. My opinion is that it's served us well over the years, but it's time for an update. The one thing for me that's missing in it, it doesn't talk about prevention. It doesn't talk about working with our youth, which I think are very important. I wonder, mission statement to truly represent our purpose. As we transitioned through the organization over the years, we recently went into a geographic policing model, which basically pushes the responsibility into the entire organization from top to bottom to be responsive, to have a responsibility for areas within the city. We developed some very good community connections as a result of it. It brought a level of accountability to the entire staff of the organization. Overall, we think it was successful. Maybe it was somewhat limited in that because of some of our staffing challenges, it wasn't to where it could be. I've heard loud and clear, we want POP back in our city. As you can see for that first bullet point, POP is coming back. What are we, how are we going to do that? We're going to redefine the organization, do some transition with our current resources. I'm not asking for additional bodies at this time, because I want to make it work. I want to make it work with what we have. One thing that is kind of a benefit for somebody that's been around the organization as long as I have, I remember fondly, years ago, as the police captain, out of the South Command, where, South Command or East Command, I had POP officers that worked directly for me, that worked with the community, that worked with the council, and it was very effective. So I'm in support of it. The one thing, though, is that I want to make sure that the police department doesn't design what POP is, how it works. So we have a starting point, but I think it's just as important that we reach out to our community to get their input, that we reach out to all of you to get your input. So each of the respective area captains will be getting ahold of you. The one thing I didn't address here is, when can you expect it? It starts to Saturday.
What, what about Friday?
Beginning of the work week.
Yes, ignore me. Yes, go ahead. Congratulations, not wasting any time.
Okay. I met with most of you and had the opportunity to share kind of my core values. What are my priorities as the interim chief of the police department? So I have them up here. Once again, transparency. Taking the mystery out of the police department, we have nothing to hide, okay? To push out information, data, every chance we get. Marketing the organization to show the great women and men of the police department and what they do day in and day out. I want Sacramento, the Sacramento Police Department to be a leader in the law enforcement profession, the industry. I want, I want to hear people say, we need to do it like the Sacramento Police Department. We need to be the leader, not follow what everybody else is doing. Real quickly, when we talk about the transparency, I just wanted to give a quick update and body, body on cameras, because I know that's something that we've been working on for some time. And we're almost there. We're getting to the part now where we're, excuse me, working on contracts. It'll be coming before the council, hopefully next month, for your approval, hopefully. And then hopefully a slow rollout implementation in, in March. So I just wanted to get that in as part of the transparency of the organization. Meaning engagement is my second core value. It's working with our communities, but really as an organization, placing the value to it, that it is important that we work with our communities. And it's beyond just what you do when you're working. My expectation of it is that it's whether you're working or you're off duties. Anything you could do to, to better the city of Sacramento, I'm going to support that. I'm going to place a value to that. Sometimes historically, we, depending on your assignment, you only work about, worry about your areas or your assignment. It goes beyond that. This is something, this is the city of Sacramento. You should be able to work, have an influence, impact, and make a difference regardless of your assignment, regardless of your on-duty or off-duty, something that I would encourage. I think that we need to do a greater involvement in our schools especially. You know, we have programs that are, that start in the high school. I firmly believe that we need to get down into the elementary school. That's where we're going to make a difference, to work with our youth in that 3rd through 5th grade A. That's where we really need to be. And when we're dealing with the public as part of our community engagement, you need to treat every community contact as an opportunity to develop a relationship, but more importantly, a potential for recruitment, for jobs. We need people that, who grow up, live in our city, to work for the city. Next one is diversity. Not only is it a community expectation, a council expectation, it's my expectation. I value diversity. Our organization needs to be reflective of the community we serve. I think it builds trust. It builds partnerships. You know, it's something that law enforcement in itself isn't going to solve or address our issues. We need to work hand-in-hand with the community. There's a number of efforts that we have done recently, our pipeline program, to help bridge that gap from people who go to our high schools and go, go on to college, but we want to stay connected with them as future, possible future employees. We have our Links to Law Enforcement program, which is used in community-based effort, community-based organizations, to help recruit individuals from our community, our diverse community. And what we do as law enforcement partners, we take the mystery out of the process. We help them be successful. And that is not just the hiring process, it's a mentorship for their entire careers. We also started recently a core program, where we're taking the organization out to the community, rather than expecting the community to come to us. Some of you may have seen, we've done, I think, three so far in the last couple of months, where we take our big command post that has Sacramento Police over here, but that's our big billboard. That's our moving billboard that we take out to various areas strategically based on a lot of population, a lot of people, especially on the weekends. And we're doing it out there in a non-enforcement capacity. It's there to engage with the community, to answer those questions, to do some recruitment, just to say hi. Last one is internal morale. It's my responsibility, responsibility of our management team to value our employees. I want our employees to feel that they feel valued by not only the organization, but the city. As the chief, or the interim chief, it's my responsibility to be visible, to be accountable, and most importantly, to be accessible to them. I have that same expectation of, of the command staff. As a leadership of the organization, we need to make sure that our, we're providing the best tools and training for all of our employees to do their job. That's the key. One of the things I mentioned are, all these, these core values are centered around our new outreach and engagement section of the police department. It works directly in my office. And they're responsible for engaging the community, developing strategies to build trust, youth initiatives, the transparency, and most importantly, the marketing of the organization. In closing, I'm excited. I anticipated challenges, but I'm up for those challenges. I appreciate the support of the council, members of the community, as we keep moving our organization forward. I hope this overview helped explain where we are headed with community policing. And most importantly, this isn't a strategy. This will be our mission. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Chief. Appreciate it very much. Let's hear from members, and I, I know I have a few comments as well. Let's begin with Councilmember Hanson.
Oh, Chief, I just wanted to say thank you for bringing POP back. The council's been asking for more than a couple of years to bring POP back, and it means a lot. And I know you and I talked about how to, how to manage the disparate challenges with fewer POP officers than we may have had before. So, you know, just let's continue that conversation. But I, I wanted to also address one thing. Today, 300 people plus sat in this room to talk about gender equity. And I know a lot of the focus around our police diversity has been around racial and ethnic diversity, which is very important. But I see Deputy Chief Lester, or you're back to Captain, Captain Lester, she was acting for a while. And she's a role model for many women and young women in our community. And I think how you led off talking about the women and man of the police department was absolutely a, a class way to go. And I just want to say thank you to Councilmember Ashby for leading the charge on gender equity. And, and I hope it's as important in your process as I know many of us believe it should be.
Yes, it is. And I was here today for that presentation. Took it all in.
Nice work. I saw Captain Seifert out here earlier today, too, and many other members of the department. So thank you for making sure that we're all part of the same team and family.
Thank you, Steve. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Chief, thank you again for, for your great presentation here and, and your points. And one, I'm glad that you started with the key principle of building trust, because I think that over time, for whatever reason, in certain communities, we have, we've had that challenge of ensuring that trust. And I know you know that specifically because you've taken that on as a personal role even before your role here. And I do appreciate your constant involvement and seeing you down in South SAC on Stockton Boulevard at our, the weekly, monthly Capitol meetings. And also for your participation in the Latino Roundtable. Let me tell you that it was, it was very well-recognized that the fact that you've not gone out there just once, but then come back out there and brought your command staff to talk about the issue. So I do want to appreciate that. And I know you started with Arturo Venegas, Chief Venegas. And if my understanding, that's when you started working on POP back then, if that's correct.
Yes.
And I'm glad that we're bringing some of those old tools that we had in the time of Mayor Joe Serna and Chief Venegas to really engage in, in the youth. And so the only thing that I would, I would.
Councilmember Steinberg.
And Councilmember Steinberg at the time was on the council, too, yes, from District 6.
Sat right where you sat.
That's right. I won't forget that. And, and Councilmember Steinberg, now Mayor Steinberg. But the, the only thing that I would encourage you on the youth component is that, that we, that we not, that we go out there and be proactive in working in the school districts and in the youths, where we need to, to go out there, where we may not have as much parent engagement, either because they're both parents working at home. And I know we have a lot of after-school programming or whatnot, but sometimes it's self-selecting. So I think if, if, on that component, if we can look at going after the community that, and working with those communities that aren't naturally going to want to go and, and join either the SAC PALS program or whatever, or other programs that we're supporting, but being effective in that. I think you've kind of done that by working with our CBOs, like Asian Resources with Links to Law Enforcement on the adult side and, and on the, close to adult side. But I think my biggest thing is, I agree with you 100%. We have to focus on, on how do we create that young relationship with law enforcement and their youth, but we have to be proactive and not expect that they're going to come to us as well. I thank you for your continued work, and we hope to continue seeing you at the, at the Latino Roundtable meetings, too.
You're welcome. Thank you very much, Eric. Councilmember Ashby.
I don't even know where to begin. I told Councilmember Moore I might start crying during the presentation. Feels like we've been fighting for this for so long, and then the resistance just disappeared and you did it. I appreciate you so much. Less than a month, and you just listened to this body that has been asking for POP. In, I mean, our job is to represent our constituents. We don't just sit up here and randomly dream stuff up. Constituents wanted community-oriented policing. It's all we ever heard. It's all I ever heard about policing. Please, can we just have the community-oriented police officers back? We knew them, we liked them, we connected to them. That is going to make, I can't even tell you what a difference in my district, and I think in other parts of the city, too. And so we're all just so, so grateful. And Saturday, I thought you were going to say April, and I was going to be happy. But Saturday, wow, that's fantastic. I am really grateful. And the outreach to the youth and the prevention piece and all that, it's just, it's everything. This is everything that we have been saying we want. So thank you so much, Chief. And, and I know, I've learned this, you don't work in a vacuum. So this team you have over here.
Mm-hmm.
And I see some good ones that I know really well, that I know Captain Gardner was a big supporter of the POP. In fact, he was in charge of it in the North Area when I first came on. And he, this is a great group that you have assembled over here.
Yes.
And a lot of them, Charles Huestead, are, they're, they're veterans of the areas that, where POP has really been effective. So thank you for bringing that back. And thank you for sitting front and center to, for the presentation today on equity. It makes a difference when your city manager and your mayor and some of your council members, your police chief, are sitting in the front row saying, we care about this. It matters to us. We want to be a diverse hire. We want to hire LGBT community. We want to hire women. We want people to have an equal opportunity. We want our police force, firefighters were there, too. We want our public safety to reflect our city. And thank you for that. Thank you for being there to hear, hear those words. Just one last piece. This mentality that you have, I know you've already put it into play, and I saw it work last weekend firsthand, because we had an incident where a youth was lost in a snowstorm outside of our jurisdiction, and I called you. And technically, I guess Sacramento wouldn't have been the lead. Our, it wasn't in our area, it wasn't in the city. But it was, but they were our kids. It was three of our young adults. And you guys took it on. And I see Roman Mariota back there, and he took the lead on this. And within just about a couple of hours, SAC PD, Roman in the lead, made contact with those kids, who by the way, were stuck in the snow overnight because they ventured out when they shouldn't in a snowstorm. And SAC PD connected all of those dots for this community. For us, Jay, Councilmember Shenier and I were both very engaged, was actually an intern from his office previously, but very connected to my team, too. And this, that's what this leads to. When you work with the community, because the driver on that were kids that were out in the community that knew where these young people had last been seen. And that's who Roman reached out to. And the transparency piece about being willing to just everybody talk and not having to fight allowed us to find those young people quickly. And this works. So thank you for putting it in place. It's already making a big difference, and I can't wait to see how it affects, how people feel about their city over the next six months, because it can only be, get better. Thank you so much, Chief.
Thank you, Angelique. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor Steinberg. Chief Louis, you know, of course, we'll always strive for diversity and gender equity. I didn't get to attend much of the, of the presentation today, but in the short time I was there, there was a lot of discussion about bias and about how in organizations, bias is intrinsic, and you always have to be on the lookout for that. And I thought that, that was very impactful to me, because it is true that every single person carries bias. So, you know, as we work towards diversity and gender equity, it is really important to do a lot of self-scrutiny in that regard. That being said, the current force that we have is just absolutely exemplary. You know, every person I've met in SPD has been outstanding in their respective roles. As regards POPs, as Neighborhood Association President in River Park in years past, I worked with POP officers very closely. And I was fond of that whole project as well. I'd have to say that geographic policing has fit the bill also. You know, it's, it's worked well. The, the point we're trying to reach here is communication and connection with our constituents. And you can call it POPs, or you can call it geographic policing. But the real issue here is making sure that people have access to SPD and that communications go both ways. So I'm grateful also to, to look at a, at a POPs program, but, you know, as long as you keep your eye on the prize, which is really connection with the community and whatever form that takes, with the limited resources you have. We know that you need more police officers, and it's tough to do it when you're short-staffed, to make that extra effort to get that connection and communication. But I think you're doing a great job. The last thing I want to say is that a piece of that, to me, is the Impact Team. They are, as far as I'm concerned, they walk on water. District 3 would be in a world of hurt without the Impact Team. And I will always advocate for enough officers on the Impact Team that we can get seven-day coverage. The work that they do is absolutely vital, you know, in terms of us working together on solving our homeless issues, homelessness issues. So again, I just want to thank you all very much in the police force, because I see what you do day-to-day, and I'm, I'm very grateful for all the help that you give us as council members in connecting with our community, but specifically, you know, the Impact Team in terms of managing homeless, connecting them to services, you know, working with a real gentle hand and moving a. a real gentle hand and moving in the right direction. I don't think you could do any better.
Okay, thank you. Actually, two points that were part of the department presentation that I didn't mention, though, is geopolicing does not go away. It's still part of the organization. And secondly, a future goal would be to have impact programs citywide.
Thank you, Jeff. Councilmember Carr.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the pleasure of going to the academy graduation a couple of weeks ago, and the mayor attended that, and was really impressed with that. I was impressed with the award ceremony that the city manager and I attended the other day. Really impressed with the caliber of people in the police department. It's, it's really exceptional, especially from the reports that I read. Ninety-nine times out of 100, the police are able to de-escalate a situation that could have turned very violent. And I know you plan to do some more of that training, but I'm impressed with the way the officers are able to maintain their cool in a very stressful situation that could easily turn violent. And probably training that I need some of, too. It's very difficult to do. Now, up here, we could sit up and try to micromanage you about transparency, because I don't think there's any disagreement with the values that you've set. And, but there are a number of activities associated with each one of those. Transparency, engagement, what does that mean? How often do you engage? What communities do you engage? Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Same with diversity. The same with your internal morale, for instance. The same with training. We could try to micromanage you on the number of training hours you should do and what type of classes and what spot and what, what you're getting out of that training. We could try to micromanage you on techniques. Is POP the right thing? Is geographic policing the right thing? Is maybe some other technique that's very popular today is the right thing to do? I don't see that as my job. My job, to me, is what result are we getting from all of that? All of that, all of those things, the activities that lead to some end, how do we know if those ends satisfy what we started out to do? To me, the police department, like all the other departments of the city, are service organizations. And the proof of the pudding for a service organization is, are our customers satisfied with the service that they've received? So that would be the standard, regardless of what you do in POP, what you do in diversity, what you do in transparency. Are people satisfied at the end of the day? Are they satisfied with our police department? Do they say their contacts left them satisfied or very satisfied with the service that they received? And in that regard, Mr. City Manager, I know we talked a while ago about doing a customer satisfaction survey. Could you give us an update at some point as to where we are on that? Okay. So I applaud you and the members of the police department. I like where you're going, but at the end of the day, it's all about customer satisfaction.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, Chief, I wanted to say, you know, it's been a pleasure, the last few times we had an opportunity to speak and you as the new interim chief, and, you know, I really appreciate the attitude in which you bring to the job. I think you bring a new excitement and energy. I get the sense that you're very pleased and happy and excited to lead...
Having a lot of fun.
...this organization. And, and you're making changes immediately, and I think you've really paid attention to what the council has suggested. Obviously, you know, we have suggestions, but you have to make it work out in the field. And so, sometimes our suggestions may not be readily implemented, because you have to make decisions as to priorities and such. But, but I think that, you know, the feeling is that, you know, the energy is starting to move throughout the system. Had a chance to spend a little time with some of the officers in the district on this past Monday at the MLK March, you know, Mr. Marieta, Officer Roman Marieta was there and, and was walking with us. And, and there were a number of other SAC PD out there, and, and I think, you know, it was really an opportunity for the officers to connect and reconnect with, with constituents and people that really, you know, I think appreciate their presence in our, in our community. And so, and I think your, your presence and your ascension to the chief status has something to do with that. Also, and I don't know if I missed it or not, but I understand Mr. Gardner got a promotion?
He's currently serving as the Acting Deputy Chief of the Office of Specialized Services.
Is that right?
Yes.
Congra, I wanted to congratulate Mr. Gardner as the Acting Deputy Chief, is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner, congratulations on your new promotion. And, you know, I think that, you know, part of, I know what you have to do is, is balance and juggle, and I know we're still short some officers, and we're trying to, we're trying to fill positions. And I think the energy and the attitude hopefully will start to be something that will attract either seasoned officers and new recruits that really want to be here in the city of Sacramento. I know that there is a, an ongoing effort to do some things that help make it more attractive to be here as a police officer, and so I'm looking forward to discussing and supporting some measures in that regard as well. But again, I just want to, I want to thank you for the job you're doing and, and look forward to continue to work with you. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and I have a great team. I mean, you're giving me all the compliments, I have a great team.
Yes. Thank you, Alan. Thank you. Make a couple of comments myself here. Outstanding. And obviously responsive to what the council and the community have been asking for, for a long time. And I, I think, you know, Jeff Harris, I think, put it well, right? What people are hungering for is that, ensuring that there is that connection between our police officers and the community. And that's part of the answer when it comes to some of the tensions and some of the problems that, that we have as well. And, you know, I never like when somebody says, "Well, this is great, but..." It's incremental. It's, and I'm, I'm loath to say that, but I want to, so take this in the right way. This is an outstanding first step. But you put this into some context here, and in your earlier slide presentation, you noted that in the 90s, back in the old days, and I was on the council then with Joe Serna and Arturo Venegas, we had 60 problem-oriented police and neighborhood police officers. You're now bringing back 10, which is an outstanding start. But it also tells us that we have more work to do here, because POP maybe had a different definition back in the 90s than maybe the way it's being used today. To me, POP was always a component of neighborhood policing. The idea was that you had officers who were, who were dedicated, for example, to going after drug houses or particular blocks that had a lot of criminal activity, as distinguished from, complementary to neighborhood police officers, where, who were assigned to a broader neighborhood. Now, you have geographic policing, I know, but we also know that because of the funding cuts and the Great Recession, the not-so-Great Recession, that we're down, you know, 100 or more police officers from the height of that time. And so, you know, we have contract negotiations coming up with our police officers, and of course, we always have to live within our means. But I also hope that one of our goals in those negotiations is to ensure that we are in a position where we can attract and retain more officers so that we can get to at least this number 60. Because 10 is a great start, and this is not to minimize your downplay, because every long journey begins with a big step, but we have more work to do. Because even the 10 POP officers as of Saturday will not get us to that, what I remember is that neighborhood services philosophy and that neighborhood police officer presence in as many of the neighborhoods as possible. And that's what I look forward to working with you and the department and the community on over the next six months to a year and two years, to get back, appropriate now to the 2, to the 2017 era, not the 1990 era, but to get those numbers back up again so that the neighborhoods of our city have officers that they know by name and that the geographic connection is small enough that there is that relationship. Outstanding work. Thank you. All right, we're going to receive and file this, and we will move then to the next item, which is, which is item 16. We do have two people to speak. I apologize. Go ahead.
That's okay. Stephanie, I believe it's Nuen, Nuen and McWorthy. Stephanie here? She left? Okay. McWorthy?
We hear a lot of things, and we hear a lot of things, and we ain't hearing nothing. First, you look at trust, racial profile. I know where that information is. All I got to do is have the person with the expert define it. A recruit. Now, there's a firm that you say can't train them, it's a firm that you don't like. You can't train a police how to identify a person that's paranoid schizophrenic. You can't train a police to find out who is, who been in and out of the healthcare facilities. That's not your train, that's not your job, not the police's job. There are situations when we say, "Out of grade schools, parents, hear me loud and clear. Be aware of how intelligence is gathered by the police department. Your babies is asked the question, 'Do your daddy have one of these?'" Your babies tell them, "Yeah." They know your daddy got a gun in his house. So we, we have to go through things where when we say, "We come to the neighborhoods and we want oversight." If you can't sit down beside a police and talk to what you want oversight by, you're garbage. I can sit down with any of these guys here and speak the same thing I speak with the Neighborhood Association. You've got to wake up, people. You're playing a game, but we've got to go to law and order. You don't have an oversight. You need an oversight of this administration. That's what you need an oversight of. The police department is going to do that thing, regardless. We need to go from machine to brass, nine brass, lieutenants and captains. Management is your problem. Nobody that drives a car ever been in here and spoke about a thing that happened in the community. Wake up. Where are their abilities? Train them to come in here and speak. You got them in our neighborhood.
Thank you. All right. The item has been received and filed. Let's move on to item 16. Just again, a preliminary comment. Working with city manager and the police chief, I've asked this item be brought forward, simply because I want to make sure that our police officers have the best training in the country when it comes to de-escalation. You deserve it, and the community deserves it. And, as you know, I've worked in this mental health field for a long time. And while we have made great progress as a society in busting the proverbial stigma, we still have a long way to go. We, and it plays out every day in our community in many settings, in emergency rooms, on the streets, in, in our neighborhoods and in our homes. And it happens every day with interactions between our law enforcement officers and people who are in crisis. So if we can afford, and we can afford it, to give our officers the Coin of the Realm training, the best in the country, 40 hours, real-life situations, you're going to do better. We're going to build better bonds of community, and it, and we'll save some lives. Not the be-all and end-all, but like 10 POP officers by Saturday, it's a big step in the right direction. Who's presenting on this? Chief. How you been?
Been well, thank you. Good evening once again. It's my pleasure to kind of open this up as we talk about a very important subject, and that's police training, specifically as it relates to dealing with individuals with mental illness. Unfortunately, in recent years, we've seen a increase in a number of police-related activities involving those in crisis or those suffering from mental illness. And the Sacramento Police Department prides itself in continually looking to see what are some of the best practices, what else is out there that we could bring to our organization. We want to be the best trained in industry. So with that, we're prepared to do a presentation on crisis intervention training and implicit bias training. And I'm going to invite Captain Mark Greenley, who is the captain of our training division, to come up here and present information to you. And then we also have Sergeant Greg Galliano, who is the sergeant of our Impact Team.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Hopefully you can hear me, my voice is kind of going out. As the, as the chief said, my name's Mark Greenley, and I'm the captain in charge of our training and personnel division. I'm here to talk about two kind of very important and timely training topics. The first is crisis intervention. We've alluded to it a little bit earlier this evening, but I want to give you a little bit more in-depth information about it and what we plan to do. Crisis Intervention Training, or CIT, Crisis Intervention Team, commonly called, is designed to educate officers on the effective interaction with and resources available to people who may be experiencing a crisis or dealing with mental illness. Crisis Intervention kind of came about in Memphis, Tennessee, in the late 80s and early 90s, so it's not really new. This is often referred to, the crisis training is often referred to, obviously, as the Memphis model, because that's where it started. And this is the gold standard nationwide in training. But it's not just training. It's part of a larger program that combines law enforcement training with accesses to services and community-based organizations. So we're just one component of that whole training team. The focus is on diversion, treatment, and collaboration, which is what we want to get into. This promotes positive contacts between law enforcement officers and those who suffer from mental illness and their families. Where are we now? So currently, as you know, the police department runs one of the best police academies in the state. In our academies, recruits receive crisis intervention and de-escalation techniques in a number of post-learning domains. Some of these topics that the police recruits go over are de-escalation and use of force, crisis intervention, persons with disabilities and mental health, and victimologies. These are all mandated by the state and things that we can't change. Once the, once the recruits get out of the academy, they, as well as just about every officer in our department, have attended at least an eight-hour course, basic course on CIT. We also give ongoing mental health update classes during our annual training and participate in de-escalation and crisis intervention training scenarios on our Force Option Simulator. Many of you have actually experienced that firsthand, or have had your staff come and experience that. Where we are now still, we, the state legislature imposed just implemented some new training requirements in the form of Senate Bill 11 and Senate Bill 29 this year, so January, that we were going to continue to meet and exceed. Where do we want to go? As the mayor alerted to, alluded to just a little bit earlier, we're proposing some in-depth crisis intervention training. This in-depth training is 40 hours based on the Memphis model. This, the topics in this will, will include overview of mental illness, dynamics of homelessness, veterans assistance, post-traumatic stress, crisis and suicide intervention techniques, de-escalation, family panels where we talk to family members and actually consumers that may be suffering with mental illness. And then we do a whole day of scenario and live role-playing exercises where we really get to learn and apply our knowledge to, to the scenarios. These are instructed by local mental health professionals, consumers, healthcare facilities, and service providers. And this is a post, peace officer standard and training post-certified course, so that's what the state regulates the peace officers. They certify this course that it's one of the best in the state. Of the police departments that are providing this training, both in the state and nationally, most, most, most departments train between 10 and 20% of their officers, just due to the length of time. The 40-hour course is very hard for officers to go to, because it takes them off the street for a whole week. Our goal, as ambitious as it is, is to train all of our officers within the next 18 to 24 months. So we're looking to train all of our officers in this 40-hour course on crisis intervention. We've devised a training plan that places emphasis on training the patrol officers and dispatchers first and quickly as possible, since they're the first responders to people on a crisis. This plan includes the assumption that we may have to incur a little bit of overtime, because we do not want to reduce our responses and our response time and the quality of service that we provide the public on a daily basis. service that we provide the public on a daily basis. Before I move on, I'd like to have Sergeant Greg Galliano, the supervisor of our impact team, which you guys are all aware of, come up and say a few words about the testimony and the value of this training. He's actually been through this training and deploys it on a daily basis.
Thank you very much, Sergeant. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. I'm Sergeant Greg Galliano. I'm currently assigned to the impact team, as Captain Greenley said. Based on my team's mandate and our mission, we regularly contact individuals who experience mental illness, developmental disabilities, and addiction issues. We also regularly contact people experiencing homelessness who are experiencing a crisis as well. We frequently make use of the principles for a crisis intervention training and program on a daily basis, and it truly helps us accomplish our job. As Captain Greenley said, I've been to this training myself, the local training, and I think it's of exceptional value for all of our officers, as well as dispatchers and other non-sworn personnel, in really helping us understand crisis events as they relate to individuals experiencing mental illness. Thank you.
So, can you describe in a little bit more detail, please, the difference between the 40-hour training and the eight-hour classroom training that the officers currently receive? What the difference will be?
Of course. The eight-hour training, Mr. Mayor, is generally a basic overview of mental illness and certain de-escalation strategies. It is, in effect, just an overview. The 40-hour in-depth training will cover mental illness, mental disabilities, and addiction symptomology, how to de-escalate an individual in a crisis event, as well as exposure to families and consumers of the different behavioral health systems. It also exposes officers to what resources are available in the community and members who work for those resources, and teaches officers how to make use of them, and then exposes them to good, solid understanding of de-escalation.
And is there practice in the Memphis model? Now, we'll be known as the Sacramento model, by the way.
I like the Sacramento.
The Sacramento model, are there real-life applications where officers can confront a situation and practice how to use the techniques?
Absolutely.
So, in 40 hours, you've got the time to...
Yes. In the 40-hour training, as opposed to the eight-hour training, there's no scenario-based experience. But in the 40-hour training, officers will go through a scenario with how to de-escalate a crisis event, and usually, those scenarios come from the advocacy groups like NAMI and other advocacy groups.
And this may be a little off the wall, but is it possible that we could open up some of these trainings to the public as well, so that they can see what the officers are getting? I mean, that... because there's a mutuality here, right? The community understanding what the officers are learning and thinking.
Correct. This training is actually already offered in Yolo County, where we've sent a bunch of the officers, and it's open to the public. We want to bring it here so we don't have to send all of our officers away for training. But yes, there's definitely an area that we can have public come in, if anybody wants to come in and watch it.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions about... I'd like to also now move on real briefly about another training topic that we've talked about, and that's implicit bias training. There's a growing body of research that shows that all people, as Mr... one of the council members earlier alluded to, harbor hidden biases, which they're often unaware. This implicit bias, or sometimes called unconscious bias, can influence our actions and are often incompatible with our conscious attitudes. They're often incompatible with what we think we feel. To help and try and counteract these actions, all sworn officers from the police department have gone through implicit bias training classes. As you can tell up on the board, our officers go through a variety of classes. When they're in the academy, it's discussed in the academy. As soon as they graduate, because we don't fall under the post guidelines right then, we put all of our officers, before they go on the street, into a four-hour class on implicit bias. Our in-service officers also get that same class in their annual training, and all supervisors from the rank of sergeant above have attended either an eight-hour or a 12-hour class on implicit bias that's been taught by nationally-recognized instructor Dr. Lori Friedel. We brought her out here to train all of our supervisors in implicit bias. Side note, that in late 2008, early 2009, our department, Sacramento Police Department, was one of the first, or the first in the state, to bring any type of bias training to the department and to the forefront of training. We actually have one of our resident experts, Doc... Charles Husted, one of our lieutenants, who actually sat on a post commission and brought this training and actually implemented it. Now, it's statewide. It's a stay-at-wait mandate for all our academy folks to have this in their academy. This implicit bias training provides key steps to keep us out in front of the curve, so that I do not know of any other department that gives all of their employees or all of their officers this much training in implicit bias. We also do an eight-hour class in procedural justice that's post-certified, and police legitimacy. We all went through this last year. In fact, other departments have contacted us to set up similar programs in their department or have called me to say, "Hey, can we come and get trained by you guys in both implicit bias and procedural justice?" So, we're definitely on the forefront when it comes to the bias training in procedural justice. So, I wanted to touch upon that. Any questions about that?
We do have some questions from council members. I think I'm going to take the couple of questions first, and then we'll go to the public testimony. If these are questions as opposed to comments, or do you want to save the comments till the end? Councilmember Harris? Okay, let's hear from the public first. Is that okay? Councilmember Ashby, same? Okay. Very good. Let's hear from members of the public here.
Okay, we have 12 people that are signed up to speak, so we'll call three at a time. This is our normal practice. We'll start with Richard Owen, followed by Constance Gustafson, and then Dr. Jonathan Porteas.
Porteas.
Mayor Steinberg, members of the council, thank you very much.
Owen, thank you.
My name is Richard Owen. I'm the co-chair of LEED, which stands for Law Enforcement Accountability Directive. We come tonight to stand in really strong support of this effort to train all of our officers. We offer our unqualified support for this and encourage even more of it. Our questions with regard to it are, how will you inspect what you expect? How will we know that this is successful? How will you measure it? I come from the field of education. We can do all kind of public, you know, professional development, but when a teacher gets in a classroom and teaches, they have to measure to find out whether or not students have learned what it is that has been taught. And if they haven't learned it, it hasn't been taught very well. So, we're very interested in knowing exactly how you inspect what you expect. We also want to offer our unqualified support for what Councilman Carr brought up in November, and he mentioned it again tonight, and it is the whole question of accountability as it relates to the public. You know, how do we know what the public is experiencing from our police department? So, we strongly support his recommendation to Mr. Chan a few minutes ago to do some kind of survey to find out whether or not the public is actually feeling these results of this training. And that's very important to us, and that's one way for us to measure it. So, we support this 100%.
Constance? Constance Gustafson?
Connie Gustafson, it's right here. Actually, I... you know, you come right ahead. You were intended to be one of the presenters, actually. I had not finished the presentation before we went to public testimony, so that's on me. So, why don't you come on up? And we were going to give you more than a couple of minutes, because you were going to describe from a mental health perspective the experience with this training. So, if members will excuse us going a little out of order, we're going to have Connie and Karen Karasaki. Nice to see you, Karen. Both present here for a few minutes, and then we'll go back to public testimony.
Thank you. Mayor Steinberg and members of the council, my colleague Karen Karasaki and I bring greetings to you from the California Institute for Behavioral Health Solutions. It is our pleasure and honor to address you today about a topic that is very important to us, and we're happy to talk to you about it. First, a little bit about our organization. CIBHS is a nonprofit agency that helps health professionals, agencies, and funders improve the lives of people with mental health and substance use challenges through policy, training, evaluation, technical assistance, and research. In 2006, CIBHS became involved in crisis intervention training by partnering with law enforcement, the California Institute for Mental Health, the mental health directors, and Post and advocacy networks to launch a learning collaborative for counties and law enforcement agencies to learn how to implement CIT training. At that time, there were only a few CIT programs in the state of California, in Los Angeles, in Monterey, San Jose are a few, and San Francisco. We also provided leadership to establish the California CIT Association. We led the effort to convene the first California CIT statewide conference. We provide consultation, technical assistance to behavioral health and law enforcement agencies to actually develop and implement their CIT trainings. We partnered with the CHP to host the first CIT summit in 2014, which later led to legislation around AB 11 and 29. We developed a statewide California CIT status report in 2015, and we are soon to publish a behavioral health CIT training and program development toolkit for California. So, as you can see, we have an history and a commitment to crisis intervention training for law enforcement and first responders. Mental illness is important to all of us. It impacts our work, our communities, and for many of us, our families. As we know today, the media is flooded with reports about crisis incidents, often fatal, involving law enforcements and individuals living with mental illness, substance use disorder, or intellectual disabilities, and many of these incidents are compounded by culture, gender, and race. This is an important and critical issue for all of us. I want you to know that from the time that we got involved in 2006 to today, CIT training and program development continues to expand and improve throughout California. We're training fire departments, correctional officers, dispatchers, and jail personnel. And Mayor Steinberg, you asked about communities. There's community training to help community members understand more about the role of law enforcement, understand the role and the descriptions about mental illness and de-escalation and communication skills. CIT training right now ranges from eight hours to 40 hours in the programs in California. Part of that is due to funding. Counties don't have enough funding to do 40-hour training for everyone.
But we are.
But you are. That's correct. And the advanced model, which we've been talking about, the Memphis Model, CIT, actually stands for Crisis Intervention Teams. It is a very specific team approach that was started in Memphis. Now, what I understand is that many areas now, and I hear Sacramento also, wants to do an entire organization training in 40 hours, which is excellent. But I want to be sure that everyone understands what the team model is really about. The model includes 40 hours of comprehensive advanced training and program development, and doing skills around de-escalation and stabilization in crisis situations is really only part of that training. There are several counties currently doing 40 hours in California. To what extent they are, it varies among the counties. And I want to be clear with you that although we rally for training, and training is very, very important, training alone does not constitute a program or a sustainable practice. And I think what you want to do here in Sacramento is not only train officers, but you want to have the deployment of what they learn to be consistent, sustainable, and effective.
Well, this is Richard Owen's question from a moment ago. How are we going to measure the impact of a significant investment in training? So, we're going to have... want to answer that one.
Oh, let me go forward, then. I will try to get there.
Yeah, briefly, if you can.
Okay. Okay. The CIT is really something what we call a community collaborative program, okay? It requires fostering agency capacity and infrastructure for effective implementation, evaluation, and sustainability. You want to train police officers. You want to train behavioral health staff. You want to have community collaborations, vibrant access to crisis systems and resources, and you want to involve your family advocacy networks in collaboration and education. Mental illness, substance use disorders, and intellectual disabilities do not discriminate, as you know. These disabilities can impact anyone and everyone. It is required to understand the impact on individuals and families. Therefore, when you're going through this process of 40 hours, it really opens the door to engage the community in ongoing dialogue and supports the principles of community policing. It creates space for cultural training, the culture of law enforcement, the culture of mental health, the culture of the communities that the officers are serving. Officers need to become more familiar with the individuals and families that live in the communities that they serve, who the leaders are, who the people are. Communities need to become more aware of what officers or what their role is and their responsibilities are to keep neighborhoods and individuals and families safe. It also teaches about stigma. It teaches about building relationships. It also teaches about officer safety. Officers are the first responders. They see everything. Their main goal is to provide safety. How do you do that, along with how do you keep people safe with the least amount of force and get people where they need to go for their resources for mental health? That's what the 40 hours will teach.
Are you going to be working, and maybe this is for Captain Greenley as well, you're going to be working with some of the experts here in developing the specific Sacramento approach to this training? Because what we're hearing here is common sense, which is that there's a lot to this, and it requires not only the development of outcome measurements, but are we including the mental health community essentially in the development of our specific training protocol here in Sacramento?
Yeah, I can speak a little bit on that. The training is kind of set up, as she said, it's a kind of collaborative approach, that our training is one part of that, and then working in partnership with mental health providers, CIBHS, those part is the other, just as much of an important part as our training is, because, you know, we want to de-escalate it, but then we have to do something with the individuals, and that's where they come in to work with them. So, yes.
Okay. That's a partnership. Okay. I'm going to ask you to wrap up here, because we've got a lot of public testimony.
I will do just that. Some of the needs are to increase training and have better training, which is what you're going to do, more accountability and follow-up for the outcome of those trainings, data collection and outcome evaluation, the accountability, as we were talking about earlier, if an officer is actually using the skills that they have been trained to do, and what's the result of that? So, what you've been trained, what can we see as a result of that training? Increase your partnerships, increase safety, decrease use of force, increase appropriate referral, and decrease adverse incidents. CIT is more than a training, if I can say, if I can't say anything else other than that. And we commend law enforcement for what they do to keep us safe, and all the best to you, Sacramento.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all your hard work in developing this very important practice. Karen?
If I may, just highlight a few points, just very briefly in the interest of time. Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. Just to clarify, because I know the question came up about, well, there's eight hours, and then there's, you know, 40 hours. And I think a simple way to say that is, when you have the eight-hour training, it really does limit the training to more didactics. So, the officers will be exposed to the different types of mental health conditions, how they... how somebody who is... has a certain diagnosis and is experiencing a crisis, how they might present during that crisis, how to recognize that behavior, how to have the knowledge and skills to be able to help de-escalate that situation. Very important, but quite didactic. And what you lose by not having the additional hours is a lot of the hands-on issues. You lose some of the additional modules, like specialization around like interacting effectively with veterans who have traumatic brain injury or PTSD. You might lose the modules around how to deal effectively with our young people, the youth, cultural competency and that kinds of issues. So, you do lose a lot of those modules. And the other thing is you lose out on the opportunity to have some of the speaker panels. That's when... That's when, in collaboration with the community members, because remember, it's law enforcement working with behavioral health providers and the lived experience community, and that could include many of the different diverse culturally and racially diverse communities, depending on how that is composed, how the composition of that. Then you can bring in speaker panels to talk about their lived experience and what it is like to interact with law enforcement, so law enforcement gets a better understanding of that. Behavioral health providers also get an understanding of law enforcement and learning how to take care of officers as well, because the officers also deal with a lot of stress in their work. The collaborations can lead towards, when it's not just a training, but it really is building an infrastructure, so that's the first step, but building the infrastructure, having conversations about, okay, how are we going to reduce drop-off time, you know, at the emergency rooms? And so those kinds of things, those processes need to be worked out, so that's part of the conversation. So that's the advantage of having not just a training, not reducing it just to a few hours of training, but really thinking about it about ongoing. And just one more point, here are some examples of how other, and it's been discussed as the gold model, a gold standard, not just nationally, but also internationally as well. And here are some examples of how others who are implementing crisis intervention teams or trainings measure some of the outcomes. So I'll just give you a quick list, and then I will stop.
Please.
But looking at the number of mental health-related calls, looking at symptomatology presented by the persons in crisis, and then looking at the length of time that might be spent on those calls, the crisis response time, demographic information, rates of TASER use, rates of use of restraint, rates of injuries to the persons that are, you know, being responded to, who are in crisis, officer injury rates, rates of diversion to treatment versus being taken into custody, and also, community surveys about what are the mental health, people with lived experience, mental health consumers, their perceptions of law enforcement and the general community perceptions of law enforcement as well. So those are examples. That's not the be-all, end-all, but those are just examples of what others around the country and internationally are collecting.
I think this is a really important part to hear, and it's, I think we're not going to want to just appropriate the body, we're happy to do it, and then send it off and report back in a couple of years. I know, I think we're gonna want to see a little bit about how this is developed and how we are actually measuring the impact of this kind of training in a way that our two experts just described. And so maybe, you know, a report back, chief, once we're a little farther down the line in terms of preparation, that shows how we're actually going to roll this out and with the outcomes, and to share that with the community, because I think that's a very important piece of this, that they know that training and education is part of culture change. That's what we're trying to achieve here. Thank you. Thank you both very much.
If I could make one final point, is that in reducing taking people into custody, you know, it will reduce, it could have economic impact.
That's right.
By reducing jail time and things like that, and the more that you can show that you're diverting people to treatment and services, engaging them in services rather than taking them to custody, I think that's something that's very positive to be able to demonstrate to the community.
Saying prevention is cost-effective, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Let's go back to the public testimony.
Okay.
Thank you both.
So we're now to Dr. Portius, and then Lori Mendoza, and Bob Erlinbusch.
Good evening.
Good evening, Jonathan.
Nice to see you, Mr. Mayor, and lovely to see many of you here. I'm Dr. Jonathan Portius. I am a licensed clinical psychologist, and I am the CEO of WellSpace Health, formerly the Effort. And we run a network of health centers across this region, serving, at this point, over 50,000 individual patients. I'm here also because I have previously been a trainer for the Post Command Academy, so kind of brought in by the state of California for the Post Commission's Academy for Training Leadership across all law enforcement jurisdictions in California. And one of my specialties for them was mental health and substance abuse training. So I'm not being arrogant when I say that I'm going to try and deliver some objective feedback about this CIT training. I also have worked as a consultant within Sacramento Police Department back in the mid-2000s, working on diversity, actually, and it's extremely encouraging to see really how far things have come and to see this renaissance of interest in the POP program in the city council. So, you know, I operate a network of health centers that if we took all the people with mental illness and referred them to local county-funded mental health treatment, we would use up every single slot immediately, just with the people we send into treatment. And so the interface between mental health in our community and law enforcement is buffered by police. We operate the suicide prevention line for 36 counties. When someone is in imminent danger of killing themselves, we send out a welfare check, and that is a law enforcement person. So both as an advocate for people with mental illness, wanting those people I serve to be treated with the appropriate intervention, and as a person who understands law enforcement and appropriate policing, CIT offers the overlay for excellent training. There's not one size fits all in training. So we have excellent core academy training, we have excellent training and command presence, but CIT gives that extra overlay that allows us to interface. Maybe someday, we'll have a community where people with mental illness, as they escalate, are treated within the mental health system. But at this point, we don't, and we have a system where law enforcement plays a critical role, especially when someone's illness is escalating. And I just want to say objectively, this is the program that will benefit our community.
Right step. Thank you, Jonathan. Appreciate it. Appreciate all your work.
Hey, Lori.
Welcome.
I just basically want to quote Sam Cochran, who is chairman of the advocacy group Crisis Intervention Training. He says here that CIT efforts don't work unless there are mental health providers working with police. Without a triage center where officers can take those in crisis without arresting them, officers are forced to use jails and emergency rooms. He also pointed out that law enforcement increasingly become the first-line providers for mental health care as social services have been cut, burdening them with the responsibility. We've got a wonderful, outstanding officers, but some officers who are not suited for the role. You've got to have the right person in order to fill this gap. So I kind of take in defense for the law enforcement, because my dad retired from the Sacramento Sheriff's Department, and I was married to law enforcement, but, you know, it's officer's safety first, you know? And to put this responsibility on their shoulders of being, you know, psychiatrists and psychologists, it's wrong. I think that you should have more mental health providers going out with them. Instead of having five officers to one mental health, social service person, I think you should have five social service people and one officer, because you're taking them away from the streets. So that's kind of what I have to say about this whole thing, but I'm very much happy that we're talking about mental health and this.
It's great public testimony. I agree with every single thing you just said. Go. You, next. Please.
Okay, Bob Erlinbusch. Following Bob is Betty Williams, and then Mark Harris.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Bob Erlinbusch with the Sacramento Regional Coalition to End Homelessness. I'm proud to support this recommendation of moving to the Memphis Model, and just to remind, and that the police, the police commission and city council listened to the recommendation, that very recommendation, many months ago, of moving to not only the gold standard in training for police officers, but equally important for dispatchers, et cetera, which I'll talk about again in a second. But nevertheless, I'm glad that you're moving on this recommendation. It's a critically important first step away from criminalizing people experiencing homelessness and getting people, both housed and homeless, the treatment that they need. I would also recommend, if it's not happening already, that as a component of the training was on homelessness, we heard the importance of consumer and lived experience. So I would recommend to the police department to also include in that section of the training currently and formerly people experiencing homelessness. And then finally, just to reiterate again, that the Memphis Model, the training is one critical piece to a holistic approach to the issue, that not only does the Memphis Model emphasize training law enforcement, but it also emphasizes training dispatchers, and then ultimately, creating MOUs with hospitals and mental health facilities, so we divert people away from jail and towards the services that they need.
Good news.
Thank you.
I'm reminded that the training includes dispatchers.
Terrific.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Another problem solved. Very good. Thanks, Bob. Betty?
Good evening. I'm Betty Williams, the president of the Sacramento branch, one of the largest branches in the state of California. Thank you, Mayor Steinberg and City Council, for allowing me to speak on this issue. I too stand before you in support of the training of the crisis intervention. Too many times with the Sacramento branch and working with other organizations, as well as working with Richard Owens and Mark Harris, and being in the room with Council Member Larry Carr and Rick Jennings, we have discussed this issue too often when it comes to mental health issues, and the turnout or the result has been critical or to death. The Sacramento branch has been involved in the just justice meetings and other outreach and individual people. One of the things that we would like to ask as far as the training, we applaud the efforts of it going from an eight to a 40-hour, but is this consistent, once the training is completed in the 40-hour session? Is there ongoing training to follow up? Is this something, is this a one-time event? How will you make sure that officers will continue or update their training when it comes to crisis intervention? Will you also reach out to organizations such as the NAACP and others on an overview on how that training happens? Will there be any type of implementation when it comes to police commissioners or the new police commissioner? Will they have some type of training or oversight of this new training? Again, I am excited, and I really feel that you heard the community and all the issues and the concerns that we had when it came to intervention and crisis intervention with mental health. Thank you, and we do support.
I think the answer to all your questions is yes.
That works for me.
Really? I mean, I think all your suggestions are right on, and we'll follow up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mark. Following Mark Harris is Pastor Gainsborough.
Pastor Harris, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, glad to be home in Sacramento instead of on that road back and forth from UC Merced, which is what I would be doing today otherwise. I want to thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I'm the co-chair of Law Enforcement Accountability Directive with my colleague, Richard Owen, and also an on-air personality with KDEE, 97.5 FM here in Sacramento. I have the unenviable task tomorrow of returning the worldly possessions of Mr. Dejan Jerome Flannot. His life has been reduced to this envelope. Mr. Flannot was a mentally ill African-American male who was homeless, which seems to be a prescription for death here in the city of Sacramento all too many times. With all due respect to Councilman Carr, 99 out of 100 in terms of a positive engagement with law enforcement would be a great score in my role as professor, but when the one turns out to be Mr. Dejan Jerome Flannot or Mr. Joseph Mann, it's not a very good score at all. I hope that by passing this item, and we're, both as an individual and collectively with lead, we're suggesting that you do, we, as Richard said, are unequivocal in our support. It's not only further knowledge that the law enforcement community needs here, it needs a compassionate heart. And I have to say, in my brief interactions with the interim chief, he seems to be a man with a good heart, and this is no endorsement. My endorsement chief probably hurt you in terms of what you're trying to get done, but I want to say that humanity begins at the top, and in order for us to be a better community, I've lived in Sacramento since 1973, I hope that what we'll do is take the humane approach going forward to truly de-escalate and do the right thing when it comes to the mentally ill. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council.
Thank you very much, Mark.
Pastor Gainsborough. Following the pastor is James Clark, Kenton Rainey, and Lorraine Brown.
Mayor and City Council. If I said I'm in favor of the CIT training increasing from eight hours to 40, would that be all I could say? Would I be cut off for redundancy? I hope not. The Bible says in Proverbs 9 verse 8, spoken by the wisest man that ever lived, King Solomon, "Rebuke a wise man, and he'll love you; but even try to correct a self-righteous person, and they will rise up and hate you." Maybe I was wrong speaking about the firemen and their outfits, but I wanted to get to the fact that of the 13 and a half million dollars spent by the city as homeless expenses last year, as recorded by the city manager, that half of those expenses, six and a half million dollars, were attributed to Sacramento Fire Department, Sacramento Police. Instead of preventing fires, a fire alarm, smoke alarm, is much less expensive than a fire engine, and mitigating the problem is, after the fact, I just want to say I'm in favor of this, and that Joseph Mann, who was shot down like a wild animal in Del Paso, if you look at that video that took three months for the Sacramento Bee to get out to public access, if he was shot with an animal tranquilizer, he would still be alive. But instead, he was shot down like a wild animal. Mental illness is not something volitional. I have experienced that, this in my extended family, I have some of you on the council. You don't ask for cancer, you don't ask for diabetes, and you don't ask for mental illness, but we need to get help to them. And as you said at your inauguration, we need 100 clinically-trained outreach workers. That's a five-to-one ratio, as is the 40 hours to the eight hours, instead of the 20 current navigators. You're on the right track. Let's have a compassion revolution in Sacramento.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you very much, Pastor.
James Clark?
So I want to start out by kind of questioning why SACPD is considered a role model, just because that comment came up earlier. We are the second highest, Sacramento is the second highest in the nation in death by cops, currently trailing Los Angeles County right now. Granted, that's not all SACPD, but a lot of it's happening in the city as well. So I think this would actually be a major help in... So I think this might actually go a long ways towards helping alleviate some of that, because if you notice what's happening in most of these deaths, almost every single one of them had one of three things in common. They were either mentally ill, homeless, or black, or whatever combination of those three. So that's a major thing. There was 12 people in the last year that were gunned down by law enforcement within this county, about half of those in city. So I want this city to really take a look at that as they move forward, and really look at whether or not 40 hours is going to be enough. You know, this is a really big issue, and I'm not sure if 40 hours is going to be enough to truly be able to identify the intricate differences between certain personality types, mental health issues, and other issues that are going on with people. types, uh, mental health issues, and other issues that are going on with people. But overall, I do support this because it is a step forward. I, I think it might not be necessarily a big enough step, but at least it is a step, especially when you really look at the statistics and the data of how many people this really does affect. Um, and do make sure you realize that this is the second highest place for people to die at the hands of law enforcement in the entire country. So hopefully this might make a dent in that.
You next?
Yes, sir. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the council, city managers, citizens of Sacramento in attendance and watching on TV or streaming. My name is Kenton Rainey and I'm a member of the Executive Board of Directors of NAMI California. It's both my honor and pleasure to represent NAMI tonight and speak in support of Agenda Item 16, which proposes to provide CIT training for all Sacramento police officers. With the increase in homelessness and mental health issues challenging our society's social safety net, we feel that this training provides your police officers with the necessary tools to achieve better outcomes when responding to calls for service involving loved ones of many of our members. CIT also is a recognized law enforcement best practice, referenced prominently in President Obama's 21st Century Policing Report, which I wholeheartedly endorse and support. As you've heard tonight, it is the gold standard. I am also a retired law enforcement officer with over 37 years of experience and worked in six different agencies in three different states. In two of those agencies, I served as chief of police.
Where?
I have conducted considerable research in this area and I can say with a great deal of confidence, this is a public safety issue for both the public and the police. The majority of office-involved shootings that occur in our country involve people who suffer from some type of mental illness. In addition, a significant number of officers are injured dealing with subjects who suffer from some type of mental illness. In each of my previous agencies, I was instrumental in championing CIT as a rich managed, a risk management tool in decreasing police liability. Along with reducing financial damages paid out because of police misconduct claims, citizen complaints, and excess force, and excessive force, bias-based policing will also reduce, along with worker comp injury claims from officers injured responding to these calls for service where we implemented CIT.
Thank you.
This is due in large part because of the cultural competency and de-escalation pieces, which is part of the core curriculum. Finally, one additional benefit providing CIT training to all your officer would help reinforce the agency's commitment to community-oriented policing, which is essential to ensuring that the PDs can, can continue to meet the needs of the citizens and visitors of our capital, city of our state.
Thank you, Chief. We need NAMI to stay involved in this effort. Really important, okay?
We pledge our support and whatever, uh, Chief Louie needs and his staff will be there.
Okay. Thank you so much for coming to testify.
And then our last speaker is Lorraine Brown.
Need some help?
Everybody turn off your cell so I'm not supposed to, all that radiation around the clock.
Take your, take your time. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Lorraine Brown. I'm a psychologist since the late 70s from California School of Professional Psychology. I'm trained as a clinical social psychologist and community psychologist, and I have extensive training. I didn't know anybody on the council was credentialed. Is anybody credentialed here in psychology? I heard you say you were an expert. Somebody said that. No? Okay. But I am an expert. We had wonderful results until the late 90s when the drug companies that came from foreign countries after our NAFTA deregulated all of our laws, most of the psychologists and private physicians were put out of business. So because of that, we don't have any treatment intervention. I agree, it's not for the police. What are they going to do? We need programs. And 13 million, I'm glad somebody brought that up, 13 million, that should have gone to housing people. The reason we're having a problem is we have profiteering going on. It is called exploitation. We used to at the Attorney General's Office have a guardian ad litem, uh, for consumer affairs that made sure we weren't exploited. But right now, we have a foreign medical drug industry and we have a war industry that is investing in housing to house the de-institutionalized patients. So we, they've increased housing, they made a lot of money from housing, but they're not providing the programs. These people need a structured environment, they need to be monitored, they need professional people. It's not for the, I think one thing that the police can do is identify where these people live and who their landlords are and who their transitional living houses are and how much rent we're paying through HUD to support these people when they're not getting any support. I think that would be an excellent study to be able to do the stats on that. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much for, for testifying and making your point. That's the public testimony. We now have council members. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor Steinberg. You know, I'd like to just say that crisis intervention training works, and the reason I say that is because I see it in practice in the River District about four days a week. The impact team and Mr. Galliano use these techniques with great efficacy. You know, they, they treat people with respect, but they also use a lot of skill to understand the population they're dealing with. Uh, you know, earlier in consent, we passed over a million dollars for turnout jackets for Sacramento Fire. Of course, that's money well spent because it saves lives, it protects our fire, uh, department workers. That's very important. $750,000 for this crisis training, I think is actually money well spent. That being said, I'd like to say that a couple of the comments from public testimony were particularly poignant. I'd like to thank the gentleman from NAMI because it does go both ways. It protects not only the individuals, but the police as well, but not just police, first responders. And another comment was that we need alternative methods of dealing with people with mental infirmities rather than taking them to emergency rooms or to jail. We're keenly aware of that. We're working very quickly and I think strongly towards creating triage and a pipeline to permanent housing. So we're trying to move it all forward at once and, and crisis intervention training is a piece of the puzzle. We have to move all of these things forward and at the same time, and we're well aware of that. I'd also like to just take a moment to thank Mark Greenley because he worked with me through the Use of Force Simulator, which was tremendously instructive to me. And quite frankly, I'd be interested in taking implicit bias training and CIT because I think it'd make me a better council member. Um, the last thing I'd like to say, we do need performance metrics. I agree with Councilmember Carr at this point, 100% that we need to be able to understand what our investments bring back to us, not only just customer, customer satisfaction, but even drilling down further into the data, how well it's working for the police, how many lives are saved. You know, there's lots of data that we can capture. And I know the city manager is considering, uh, performance metrics. I would like to suggest that our independent budget analyst office could be used to that effect, and I hope that we can move forward in that regard because there are many projects that we engage in, in the city of Sacramento that would benefit greatly from performance metrics so that we really know how well our money is spent and, and exactly what we're achieving. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Ashby.
Yeah, it was a great presentation. Thank you. It's, it's a great body of work. It's just another kind of example of where I think we're doing the right thing, just want to do more of it and faster, and you guys are doing a wonderful job for us. And I just wanted to take a moment to say that I, I know this was a really high priority for you, uh, mayor. And so it's a good measure of you, uh, coming in and doing the things that you said you would do. I, I had made this argument to him earlier today, I don't think anyone on this dais knows better than me what he said he would do in that campaign. And this is definitely something I heard him say many, many times. So to watch it happen this quickly in your first 30 days is impressive. So good job. And I'm, I'm proud of the police department for stepping forward and seeing this as an opportunity to improve our ability to serve the community. And, um, separate from that, and I appreciate that the mayor brought this up earlier too, we're going to need to have some conversations about retention because when we invest this much in our officers, particularly when we start doing these trainings and we build the best that we can, we want to be able to keep them. So that's a conversation for another day, but I sure appreciate the mayor, uh, seeing this one all the way through. And then I want to just say one thing about the implicit bias. We've talked about implicit bias today in this regard, in terms of training officers and, and how they interact with the public and with each other. There will be another layer of discussion about implicit bias next week that the mayor is also bringing forward that has to do with hiring and promoting. And one of the things that we, we are going to want to see, or we're going to recommend, is that we bring in another type of implicit bias training that allows us to review how we hire and what our standards do for us and how the promotion process inside of departments, particularly ones like the police department, where folks sometimes have not been able to work their way up through the ranks, um, for whatever reason, that we go back and we find those barriers and we, we knock them down. So that'll be another layer of implicit bias that we talk about, not just for the police department, but for the whole city and for every department that we have. And I think when, when we do that, as Councilmember Harris said, we push ourselves to be a better version of what we are right now. So I'm looking forward to that conversation as well and just want to applaud our, our police department for stepping way out and, and wanting to do the best that we can to serve our community.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Ashby. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor Steinberg. Just a quick question on the training.
Come on up.
You heard several speakers suggest that instead of training an entire police force and how to deal with mentally ill people, that we employ mental health professionals with the police force. Now, I'm sure you considered that alternative. Why did you reject that?
We actually haven't rejected it. We already have a mental health clinician that rides with one of our officers currently. Well, we've been doing that for about a year, a year or so, that rides downtown alongside one of our officers. So we have a police officer riding with a mental health clinician assigned to Sergeant Galliano's team.
The suggestion was that there, there be more of those so that they could be deployed throughout the city.
Absolutely. We would love that.
Me. I'm, I'm going to address that in my comments. It's, it's a, it's a very good question, but there's, there's an answer. We're going to be, we're going to do more on that as well. Go ahead.
Your comments then.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I know you've made this one of your top priorities and to see you come forward with such a strong plan right away, I think really speaks to the commitment that you spoke to during the campaign and as a mayor and also as a friend. You know, this is something that I think is truly going to be an impactful initiative in our city. It is something that I think helps us sort through the homelessness, homelessness issue. It's one of the, the key pieces. Uh, and was mentioned earlier also, um, you know, unfortunately, we had a couple of, of men that were, that, um, that are deceased, that had homeless issues. I mean, that had mental, mental illnesses and, and I believe that this initiative's really going to have a, a tremendous, well, it has the opportunity, let me say, to have a tremendous impact on, um, ensuring that we have less frequent situations like that and that we begin to transition people who have mental disabilities back into some form of, of productive life and, and not have it be a life-ending sentence to have a, a mental illness. And so I, you know, I think, Mr. Mayor, this is truly going to make a difference and I just wanted to thank you for that.
Member Hanson, thank you.
I'll join the chorus of thank yous to the mayor, but also I know that for as much as we have ideas up here, it's our staff who really help implement them. And whether it's our city manager or interim police chief or any of the other people from the team out there working on this, this, that's, that's really who I want to thank because the council's been talking about sort of continuing to evolve our tactics and our strategy around how we work on mental illness. This is clearly a next step in our evolution and I want to thank you for bringing it forward. I also just want to make a comment. We expect a lot of our police department, and I think that especially during the recession, uh, when we had layoffs and other things, we stretched the, the force pretty thin. The council's been working for the last several years to restore, uh, resources, uh, thanks to Measure U. And one of the things that we did was create this, um, impact team that Sergeant Galliano and, uh, others were referencing. I think that the danger of, and excuse me, I'm, I've got some allergies right now thanks to the, the weather. Um, one of the dangers of creating a special team is that everyone else thinks that that's somebody, that's that team's responsibility. When we had traffic enforcement, everyone'd say, oh, that's traffic enforcement's responsibility. And I think when we deal with whether it's implicit bias or, uh, crisis intervention training, we want to empower every single officer to know that it's not only part of their job, um, but they're also empowered to do something in those situations. And some of the things that have happened, while unfortunate, I think could have been prevented through better training and empowerment of officers with the tools that are being talked about tonight. And, and that's what I really hope we get to, where it's inculcated throughout the whole department and its culture, that everyone has an individual responsibility to try to make a difference when dealing with, um, these particular issues. And I think the training is a good opportunity to share that knowledge that Sergeant Galliano talked about. But also I think as we work to reshape our view of our police force in our city and build trust, we have to re-engage in the community in ways that diffuse, that are constructive. And, and I think we've got new challenges than we even had a few years ago. As cuts have been made, um, to the state prison population, a lot of people are being released without services. And, you know, I think that our police department, for better or worse, has been made the front lines of, of dealing with some of these social issues. And I think the, the people from the, the public that made comments about how, how that's a very difficult situation to put officers in, I think are right, just as the people who've said our officers aren't well-trained enough or, or don't have the, the tools they need in order to successfully face that challenge. And so I, I think that, um, I, as a council member, I know the mayor's been working hard on also bringing the county and the city together around how we better provide services, how we get ahead of the curve at getting some of these vulnerable people, not only off the streets, but into a better, uh, situation, whether that's with housing or services, because that's ultimately the answer. And I think for, for all of the training we can give our police department, it will never offset for the lack of, um, housing or for the lack of services. And I, I truly believe this is, is an essential piece, but the big picture and how we will move the needle on really changing, uh, the fundamentals here is going to be through a better provision of services in partnership with our county, state, and federal partners.
Well said. Vice Mayor Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor, and I too want to thank you for making this a priority in our city and one of the first initiatives that you're bringing forward because this is a much-needed initiative. This is so important when we take a look at the benefits of CIT. And thank God for technology because I'm sitting here looking at the actual 1988 Memphis document that talked about the collaboration, and it takes you down to the very end of the program benefits. Crisis response is immediate. The arrests and the use of force has decreased. Undeserved, undeserved consumers are identified by officers and provided with care. The patient violence and the use of restraints in the emergency rooms has decreased and officers are better trained and educated in de-escalation techniques. Officers' injuries during crisis events have declined and officers' recognition and appreciation by the community has increased. And it goes on and on and on and on and on. And these are the kind of things that I think we all want to do because we talked about a collaborative approach. And I think the, the question I have in this whole process is the, the police I know will get 40 hours of training and I know it takes, from what I hear, 18 to 24 months to get that training. And, and then I've heard the question of like, what's next after the training? And I'm sitting there thinking, how do we get through the 18 to 24 months and can we speed that up? Is there a way of speeding that up without putting too much stress and strain on the officers so we can get to these benefits so much quicker? so we can get to these benefits so much quicker? And how do we also train the community as well to be a collaborative partner in this whole process? Because I know it's more than just the officers that will get this training. And so, that's what I'm missing in this whole thing. And I know you'll come back with an action plan. I know we'll learn that process of how the community can work hand in hand with the police department in order to implement CIT in Sacramento. But I just want to stop for a second and say thank you very much. This is an important priority for Sacramento. It helps the people to regain trust in our police department. I know all the questions haven't been answered. I know those answers will come as time goes on, but I'm very supportive of what we're doing and where we're going. And I can't wait for us to implement this here in Sacramento and be a leader in the state and in the country in CIT implementation.
Thank you very much, Rick. Councilmember Brigetta?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'll start off by saying more education is always good. So, thank you, Mayor, and thank you specifically to our Sacramento Police Department. And a special thank you to Captain Greenly, because, you know, I appreciated you taking the time to walk through the academy, and, you know, and also, you know, to see some of the direct interactions with our law enforcement officers there during the academy, and having that one-on-one with the individual folks, not knowing that I was coming in, and having a frank conversation. And I also appreciate that very blunt and frank conversation that we had about diversity, about training, and about, you know, where we are in our community and police relations with the city of Sacramento. And to see some of these recommendations is extremely enlightening, and extremely also powerful to say we are going in a very positive direction. And obviously, I, you know, the part of the conversation and part of what this highlights is that our officers are, have more training than many of our other neighboring jurisdictions and many other cities throughout the country. In fact, compared to our other comparable cities, we have a higher standard for our law enforcement. There is always room for more growth. More education is always good. And, you know, I never fail an opportunity to support Sac State, but we have a lot of Sac State and Hornet alums that are coming from Sac State that are joining the police force. So, our officers are coming in with a bachelor's degree and some of the pluralism requirements that are part of the bachelor at Sac State. So, that's extremely enlightening. So, I'll close by saying, we've always got room to grow. I greatly appreciate that time in the simulator, talking to your officers, and the frank conversation, and what we hear, see here today. And I'll close again by saying that more education is always good.
Thank you very much, Eric. So, you know, I asked the city manager and the police chief probably three weeks ago if they could put this together and bring this before council and have a specific plan of action. And they did. I'm grateful, and I say thank you. And if I might, just a little personal reflection, I'm sitting up here thinking a couple of things. One, I'm really liking my job. But number two, I'm realizing here in the early weeks, some frustration that I feel. And the frustration is, I want all of this to be much better now. The question that Larry Carr raises, the community, the public testimony raises, even about this proposal, this is a very important first step, but what about linking people to services? What about housing? What about all the other things that we have to do? And I'm sitting here thinking, I want all of that to be better sooner than later. And we don't, in many ways, we don't have time to waste, because a man died. A man died last night in front of City Hall. And yet, I have to remember from my own experience in government that what you do is your best every single day to put the pieces together, and to initiate, and to then tie the pieces together. I mean, this week, it's training, and two weeks, it's going to be permanent housing. As we speak, we're grappling with how to create more emergency shelter. Several weeks, we're going to have a major agenda on youth. We're always going to go back to innovation and our economic development. And I just, I want us to continue to be impatiently patient on everything, to congratulate ourselves and each other, and to say thank you, because it's appropriate, but to say, guys, and men and women, there's a great sense of urgency when it comes to improving Sacramento, and especially the plight of people who are really hurting. That's what we hear from the public every week. And give us, and me, a little bit of a chance to keep, and all our colleagues, to keep putting these pieces forward, and then let's look back three months and six months and evaluate it as a whole. So, I will take a motion that seeks to fully fund the CIT program at mid-year, and then in the mid-year budget on the 7th of February, we'll validate and affirm it. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Abstain. The measure passes. I thank you, my colleagues, for wise investment for our police officers, for all the mental health community that came tonight, and for the public. Let's get going. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Now, to item 17. This is the marijuana cultivation issue. It's not, I'm going to excuse myself for one second. How you doing?
I'm doing well. Good evening, Vice Mayor Jennings, and members of the city council. My name is Randy Knott. I'm the Director of Government Affairs, and I work out of the city manager's office. On November 22nd, the city council took action to pass an ordinance that will permit commercial cultivation of marijuana in the city in land uses that are appropriately zoned. Due to the unknown impact of this use, council directed staff to return with a resolution establishing how marijuana cultivators can be responsible for any potential adverse impacts from their operations. There's a long history of ensuring that developments mitigate any potential adverse impacts on surrounding communities, neighborhoods, and businesses. The intent of this proposal is to ensure that the city will have funding to conduct a study on those impacts of this new industry, and to mitigate those impacts as appropriate. To accomplish this goal, cultivators are being asked to submit a neighborhood responsibility plan, when they submit their application for a conditional use permit and for a business operations permit. The way that the neighborhood responsibility plan may vary in a number of forms. One way is the possibility of contributing up to 1% of the business's gross receipts that can be used by the city to address measures to mitigate the impacts, as well as to fund a study on those impacts. Alternatively, the applicant may pay a fee in an amount established by the Development Impact Study. This resolution also authorizes the city manager to establish a marijuana cultivation impact fund into which the money shall be placed for use in the city council district in which the development is located. In summary, cultivator applicants may meet the requirement of the neighborhood responsibility plan by voluntary periodic payments of 1% from their study, or payment of a fee in an amount to be determined by the study. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, as is Steve Adagaki from the city attorney's office.
Thank you so much. If you hold on to that, we'll go to public comment first. Do we have a public comment on this item, please?
Yes, we have about eight members signed up to speak. So, we'll start with McWorthy, and then Catherine, not sure how to pronounce the last name, and Deanna Garcia.
We had an audit on how much tax that had been come through the city's general funds in the past 90 days, in the past six months. No, people. Could I have this up over here? While are we still at those same issues? Thirty years. It was police brutality, block grants, drugs and things. Why are we still funding that? Because you don't have the ability to move it, because you are a part of it. How do drugs get across the state line? State police departments involved. Nobody weighs the cocaine when it come in, and when it hails. But where did it come to? Black folks' neighborhood. With low-income housing. You use that in order to bring funds in, that's the reason you've got your previous mayor here, because he stole the money through lobbying other California cities. That's the reason the governor now went to Oakland and stole the money and built a war chest and become governor again.
One point of order, I'm not sure the relevance of this to the item.
Can you stay to the item, please, that we're speaking to?
But you're not telling us where, we're not telling us where you moved it down.
The document that's up there, how does that relate to the item that we're speaking on?
I don't know, because you ain't done nothing about drugs, and you have spent the felled money, you've spent felled money on drugs, drug prevention. What have you done? What have you done? Nothing. Wake up, people. You can't, because you are part of it.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Hey, Catherine, I believe it's Anusik. Am I saying that right?
It is, Anusik, yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of our council. I'm Kathy Anusik. I'm from the Hagenwood Community Association, and also here on behalf of many of our District Two Neighborhood Association leaders. We've done a lot of work in these past years, I mean, these past months, on this issue. So, I have a few questions. One, I want to say thank you. Thank you for the work that's been done on this. We're pleased with a lot of the protections that you are working to put in place for our neighborhoods, to make sure that the unintended consequences are addressed. So, my first question, probably the most important one, is about cultivation. And is this going to only be for cultivation facilities, or can we make this also a part of the manufacturing and the lab testing? Since this is a new industry, we have questions about what's going to happen in the neighborhoods, and how it will be regulated and worked. So, I'd like to ask that that's done on more than cultivation facilities only. And then I have some questions about the other possibilities. I think I heard Randy mention that the periodic payments would be voluntary, and that there were other means of fulfilling the requirements of this. So, we'd like to hear what those other possibilities are. And then about the study, I was unsure in reading through this, is the proposal going to, is the fee going to fund the study, or is the study funded already, and the fee would be going directly to the needs in the neighborhoods? And then, when would that study happen? Is that happening before the applications are taken? Because the applications, as I understand it, are going to be starting very soon. So, thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. We're going to take all the questions from our speakers, and we'll answer them all at the same time, okay? Thank you.
Deanna, and then Kimberly Cargill.
Hello. My name is Deanna Garcia. I am a city of Sacramento registered cannabis farmer. Welcome, Mayor Dale Steinberg. Great to see you sitting in the mayor's seat here tonight. Yeah, but when I wrote it, you were sitting there.
We'll make your dreams come true.
Thank you. It's been a long time in waiting. Thank you, city of Sacramento, for bringing us so far. I am here to say I support the 1% of gross receipts for the giving back to our neighborhood and our community, and I look forward to working with the city of Sacramento and going forward.
Thank you.
Kimberly. Following Kimberly is Michael Hicks, and then Tracy Schall.
Good evening, council members, and welcome, Mayor Steinberg. My name is Kimberly Cargill. I'm the Director of a Therapeutic Alternative, and a partner with various cultivations throughout Sacramento. I just want to say that our industry does have some very good actors, and many of us would like to give back to our communities in a number of ways. And we absolutely support the 1%. We want to help our neighborhoods most impacted. We want to work together with our community, and we want to work with you to make Sacramento better. So, I think a mandatory 1% is a good way to do that, so that way, we're not just counting on certain businesses to carry the burden of all businesses in helping our local communities here in Sacramento. Thank you.
Mayor Steinberg and council, thank you for your service. I would like to say that I am in favor of this plan as an operator in this city, a registered operator. One thing that I did find out during this process was there was still a concern by many neighborhoods and citizens of the city, or the adverse effects that could come with this. As we move forward with marijuana in a hole, yes, there is a less look at it as a stigma, but still, there is concern. And I wish to put that as an ease. This plan does do that for some members. I also would like it to be transparent as it can with operators, so we can work together at also trying to eliminate these problems altogether. I also would like to bring to the factor that we plan on doing even more than these plans. For years, these groups have been positive in the way of whether it be food banks, or clothing drives, or giving back to the community in any other way we can, even by lowering overdose prescription death, by also having that medical availability. So, I challenge not only the operators in this city, but the operators in this state, to give back more than these type plans that are set up, and show what positive effects that we can also bring to each and every neighborhood that we are involved with. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Tracy. Following Tracy is Lorraine Brown.
Welcome, Tracy.
Hi. Nice to see you, Mayor Steinberg and members of city council. I'm Tracy Schall, Executive Director of Power and Alliance. I've probably spoken on this topic more times than you would like. But I am a representative from a coalition of 1,300 property owners in the southeast quadrant of our city. And our owners, our businesses, and our residents have had many concerns and reservations regarding the city's proposed marijuana-related ordinances. But I would like to take this moment to thank some key members of city staff who have played an integral role in helping us to develop, I think, a more structured policy, and to really help us understand what the city is proposing to do. So, at this time, I'd like to thank Randy Knott, Brad Watson, Joy Patterson, and Steve Adagaki. They have spent a lot of time and effort to put together a policy. This industry is coming. I've met with many members of the industry, and as Kimberly alluded to, there are many good operators. And I think, as I've had the opportunity to get to know many of the proposed cultivators, it's been a learning process, I think, on both our side as well as theirs. So, I would just like to say, as we move forward, as our district, being the most heavily impacted of this proposed ordinance and those coming forward, we wholeheartedly support the need for the neighborhood responsibility plan. It is the right thing to do for the two districts most heavily impacted, and we thank you for the work that's been done. Let's push these areas up rather than bring them down.
Thank you very much for testifying.
Lorraine. Last speaker is Jeffrey, and I'm sorry I can't read the last name. Tardigil?
Tardigil.
Thank you.
Who's going first? I think...
Who's next?
Lorraine.
Lorraine is next.
Thank you, sir.
No worries.
Well, I'm glad that we're addressing the issue. I have a few questions here. The legal binding neighborhood responsibility stands out as a major question, because having sensitive groups and people that are on marijuana, we know that, and the new test is coming out to test whether someone's under the influence, if they're under marijuana influence or alcohol, affirms what I'm saying, that drugs and alcohol incapacitate people. So, right now, we have special interests in the community. What I would like to see, as a therapist, first of all, I see a double bind theory here. It's against our federal laws, number one, so we're violating our federal laws. Number two, it's, we're going to be testing to see if they're incapacitated, yet we are hammering away and encouraging everybody to be on drugs and pot. And the media is going overboard on marketing that and brainwashing people. And the media is going overboard on marketing that and brainwashing people. So it's a double-blind theory is what we're creating, and that's how you have a schism in a political system or in a person. What that does, and I don't think I used up my two minutes, but they don't like me to talk, so I'm thinking, can we have, can we have a red light district? I think the people that are using should be in their own community. Why not? I see them hanging out together. I don't see the neighborhood watch as an alternative. I think they've become a little team of a cultural-sensitive group, and I think the rest of us are being excluded and, and it's arbitrary discrimination. And it's hostile. And it's a threat. So I would like to see them in their own community. Why not? They all hang out together, they can all get high. Why can't we have a red light district? And then the cops would know that's where it is, you know, and everybody can be relaxed.
Legal now in California.
Maybe we can consider using the money for that end.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Jeffrey.
Happy New Year. Mayor Steinberg, council. This is semantics, this is verbiage. The county is adverse to marijuana. As a medical marijuana community, there has been good impacts and good neighbor policies and has been mentioned through here. I'm questioning why do you have adverse in there rather than just marijuana impacts so you can find what is impacted and a positive result of being a good community member? It's just semantics, but since the county has been adverse to marijuana, it's just a suggestion that two, should we say, statements in there are adverse, and I question, would it not be? For the record, I did not support 64, but here we are, and so, you know, but I suggest in Sacramento County, it would be a nice example if you would look at the total impact good, as well as, quote, "just focusing on the adverse impact of marijuana."
Thank you, Jeffrey. Thank you, thank you. All right. Councilmember, we're going to begin with Councilmember Gueda. He's not up on the, tried to punch up first, but.
Yep, I'm good here.
Your mic's on.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you very much, Mayor Steinberg. First, I want to thank everyone, both in, in the, in the audience and all our city staff who, who helped get us to this point. This is a long time coming. I think, you know, for as many meetings as we had and discussions about how to make this occur, occur, first, thank you all very much for all of the time and putting up with also my tenaciousness on, on this issue. Special thanks to our, to Randy and Steve and Jim in our city attorney's office so that we can get the, the language both legally and logistically correct to execute this type of fund so that we can be prepared for neighborhood impacts. Again, this resolution sets the ability for the city to enter into agreements with the, with the cultivators on a 1% annual gross income contribution to a fund to address the issue specifically in those council districts where the, where the, and neighborhoods affected, where the, the facilities will be at. I want to, I want to make sure that everyone knows that this is on top of our current 4% that's already there. It'd be a total of 5% that are, that's coming to the city. The resolution deals with the requirements by the State Impact and Mitigation Fee Act. So we've dealt with that issue by providing the option of the NEXA study. The NEXA study does take a long time, but it does real, but this does give the opportunity for folks to start and participate in immediate 1% gross revenue to the city to address those issues. Finally, I think this resolution acknowledges that there are still some perceptions, there are still unknowns, that there may be not only just primary but secondary effects. And it also, as you heard from testimony today, that even the, the industry and the cultivators are, are want to make sure that everyone around them is benefiting. When, if we address all our neighborhood impacts, what do they say, rising tides lifts all boats? Did I get that one right? Good, Jay, okay, good. I'm bad at American idioms. So I think this, this, this resolution recognizing that by allowing us to have a fund of resources that can respond to issues that will, that may occur in neighborhoods. And I think in the, in the long run, this will also create a stronger collaborative work and, working coalition between communities and the cultivators in that industry. I also want to close by, by saying that I do recognize that there are other parts of the industry and that there are manufacturers and other pieces that are involved in this. And so with that, in, I will move this resolution and, as, as stated here, and also provide staff direction to use this language as a template for other, the other cannabis industries or components of the cannabis industry that come up to council for consideration. I do want to acknowledge that we did hear this from constituents, but because of the way that we approved the last cultivation ordinance, it specifically alluded to cultivation. So we are in thinking of this and responding to the concerns of constituents that this should be part of all of the, the aspects of it. With that, I do want to, again, acknowledge everyone's hard work in this. We've gone a long way, and I think now we've got a product that has both community input and legal, stands to legal strength.
Good work. Councilmember Shenier.
Thank you, Mayor. So first of all, I want to second the motion here and just make a couple of comments. Also, I think staff has done a great job. I think you forgot Brad on your list of people, so we want to make sure we get that. But there was a whole team of people that have been working on these issues, and I think we drove Steve Etigake and Jim Sanchez to the brink on this one. Because this is, this is a very thin line. This is not a tax. We, we have not gone to the voters on this. Kimberly, it's not mandatory, it's voluntary on, on the part of the cultivators as an option, otherwise going through a study to see what the, the potential negative impacts may be. So that's a choice that the cultivators will have. We don't know yet how much money this will bring into the city, bring into the neighborhoods. I want to remind people, there's really three ways that, that the industry will be paying the city. First of all, there are fees for the licenses, Title V and Title 17 licenses. They still, those fees will cover police, will cover code enforcement, will cover the cost of actually processing applications and overseeing the industry. So that's a piece of the puzzle. As, as Eric said, there's the business operations tax, which is 4%. We know this year, the latest estimate just on dispensaries is $4.6 million to the city, so a significant amount of money. And then the Neighborhood Responsibility Plan, which is the 1% of gross revenues on this. It would apply, hopefully, and we want to, I want to just augment a little bit on the direction of staff. We want to go back and look at dispensaries to see if we can add this on to dispensaries. And then as we move forward, manufacturing and distribution are two more pieces that will be coming pretty soon. It wouldn't apply to delivery, probably wouldn't apply to the testing aspects too, just for, for who they are. Again, I, I want to go back for a second. This is a balancing act for the city. We certainly don't want to overtax the industry. I've participated in a lot of conversations that are both local and statewide. There are localities that are putting 10% taxes or more on this in addition to what the state is going to be charging. We want to do something that, that treats the industry well, but also takes care of the neighborhood, and so balancing those two pieces. So, again, I want to thank Councilmember Gueda. He has pushed this through and we have spent a lot of time with this. We also did work with the industry on this, and I have, I speak with the industry, many, many operators in the industry on different occasions. I've not heard a single person complain about this. I think everyone is willing to come in, take care of this for the good of the city and really be a good operator. So with that, again, I want to second the motion and look forward to moving on.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to try to be brief, but I come from a little different perspective on this issue. I think the city staff has done a lot of work and worked with Councilman Gueda and Shenier on this, on this item. But, you know, I grew up in communities that were challenged in a lot of ways and, and I see this, this, this issue a little bit differently. I don't believe that a voluntary community benefits agreement does nearly enough for the communities where these facilities are more than likely to show up. I also have concerns about allowing the uses in, in practically all zones throughout the city. I think that will make it harder to police both the license, both the legal and the illegal licenses. It's going to make, I think, business tougher for some of the legal businesses. And also, I think potentially it impacts professional and business corridors that would have a chance to really come back with traditional retail. And this, I think, is going to allow uses that are not necessarily retail to be opened and to take space and business opportunity away from people who have been long without it. I am not a anti-medical marijuana person, nor am I anti-recreational marijuana person. I believe that next year, if and when all the legislations are, are sorted out and, and the state comes up with guidelines for recreational use, I think that would be more applicable to a commercial zoning. You know, I see this as, essentially, it's a big business, it's a big opportunity, and quite honestly, I think it's a lost opportunity for us to really get some of our harder-hit communities back on par with the rest of the city. You know, I think if you look at traditional development, like school impact fees and park fees, when those fees are collected, they're collected and used in the communities and the school districts in which these, their projects are built. And so I, I just see a very difficult process trying to identify and negotiate separate deals with, you know, with different organizations throughout a community. You're going to pit, you're going to pit organizations against each other because somebody are going to try to cut a deal with, with one organization and then they'll get them to come and advocate, and then you're going to have a whole slew of other, of other organizations that will come out against you. And so unfortunately, I think it's going to make for a busy time at the council because, as you know, there's a call-up provision, and I think that's something that will probably be pretty active, at least if I have my way. So, as much as I'd like to support this ordinance, I'm not going to. And I think I've stated my concerns. I know that it's, it's more than likely going to pass, but I think it's important for me to, to mention and to have all that are listening recognize that, in my mind, this is an opportunity missed to really get all of our city moving in the right direction. And I think unfortunately, it's going to tilt in the other direction in particular communities and, and, you know, I'm not happy about that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. For me, I believe that we have made a series of grievous mistakes relative to this topic. And this particular agenda item brings forward a very minimalistic give back to communities that would be grossly impacted with our current policy. I look forward to an opportunity in the future for us to repair this flawed ordinance. However, unfortunately, I believe it will not be an opportunity that we will have until we see damage that has been done to communities that are already suffering. So, I'm not going to support it tonight. It definitely doesn't go far enough. It definitely does not go far enough to mitigate the mistakes that we have already made on this topic.
Thank you very much. I apologize on the mic there for a second. So, I'm going to support the ordinance and, you know, legislating is imperfect, but I appreciate the members have grappled with these difficult sets of issues. And look, here's the reality, whether you agree or disagree with marijuana, it's Proposition 64 passed, this is going to be the law. So it seems to me that it is our job to balance the opportunity, yes, to maximize revenue for desperately needed city services, including law enforcement and youth and all the other things we care about, the, to mitigate the impacts on neighborhoods and to allow an industry that is otherwise legal to, to thrive. And if we can do this in such a way that does not make marijuana and, and the industry dominating in any way, but where we still benefit, I think you've achieved a good imperfect balance. And let's not forget one other thing when it comes to neighborhood impact. It's true that, you know, we can argue about 1%, but the fact of the matter is, is that if we do this right and if we can gain more revenue over time, significant general fund revenue, it's my commitment, and I know it's a commitment of this council, we're going to put a lot more resources back into District Two and youth programs and District Six and youth programs and District Five and the other districts and the neighborhoods which need the help the most. Because I look at these budgets and we want the headroom, Rainey, to be able to, to be able to invest in community building in these neighborhoods. And this is, in, in the era of sparse resources, this is one important way. So the 1% is a floor, not a ceiling here in terms of the way I look at these neighborhoods. I support this. Moved and seconded. Let's do a roll call vote on this one, please. Jeff, I'm sorry, Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I punched up a little late. I have a question for the city attorney. In terms of an exaction of this nature, it really had to be tied to a NEXA study, is that correct?
Mayor and council, that's correct.
And did it also have to be a voluntary?
The way it was crafted was you have a voluntary contribution of 1% because we can't directly mandate that without having evidence through a study that would support the, the potential adverse impacts and mitigation towards that. So absent the study, we didn't have the ability to mandate the 1%. So the proposal here is to have the option of voluntarily providing the 1% or contractually committing that as soon as we complete our study, that number, whatever the study produces, would be the number that would be, be applied.
Okay. So it's, it's really a step to gather some money at the front end voluntarily while we do the study that's going to be necessary, and then we come up with a real figure on what mitigation for potential neighborhood impacts would actually cost.
It's actually an option that the, the applicant for the conditional use permit would have. The 1% or whatever the number, they would be contractually committed to, whatever the number would ultimately show under the study.
So if, if an operator opts for the 1%, then they are exempt from the study if it proves, say, we really need 3%.
If it proves more or less, they will be exempt, yes.
And then can this council affect that moving forward or is that a one-time deal?
Once you have the conditional use permit granted, there is a vesting that applies at that point, so we wouldn't be able to go back on that particular project. But if down the road, the council determines that that isn't enough, the council can always come back and look at modifying those numbers if, if that's something that, that is shown for the future.
Including the overall tax rate, correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
To the voters. Tax rate would be for the voters.
That would be before the voters, right.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, again, this is, and I, I'm sorry?
Let, let's go one at a time. I'm sorry. Jay, you want to answer the question?
Yeah, I think, I mean, this is the balancing act that we've done and why it's an either-or, so if I'm a, if I'm an operator, to answer your question, I have a choice coming in, I could say, I'll voluntarily do the 1%. Then there is no, there's no study on what I'm doing. Or I can go through the study and say it. You could peg that number any way you want. On the voluntary side, the council, I think, could always come back at some later point on future agreements with people if they chose to do it. I, I think that at some point, we may want to go back to the voters and change the 4%. I obviously tried to do that on, on the youth piece, going to 5%. It's a two-thirds vote and it becomes a special tax. Saying that this is mandatory... Saying that this is mandatory would make it a tax and would make us go back to the voters as well.
Necessarily a two-thirds if it's for general fund purposes, correct?
Well, that's different, yeah. If you just, if you just said, and that's the way we did back in 2010, where the voter said 4 percent on any cannabis industry, and that would, that would pertain. So, right now, if this passes, I think where we would go with direction to staff is, on all cannabis industry, there would be a permit fee, Title V and potentially Title 17, depending on what type of industry, plus a 4 percent business operations tax. And then in some cases where it's a geographically driven piece, so not delivery, but these other distribution, manufacturing, and cultivation, that would be the voluntary 1 percent or doing a fee.
And the, and the, just the conditional use permit is for a time-specific, correct? It's not infinite, indefinite, is it?
The conditional use permit would be granted, and it would have to be engaged, they would have to activate it, undertake the use, but so long as they had the use consistent with the application that they had made, they would be able to have a bested right associated with that.
Okay, definitely. Councilmember, Councilmember Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, I don't want to beat this up anymore, but I do think that it's important to note that we're talking about, you know, resources going into communities that need them and not putting additional burden on these communities. And I think the way that this is structured, that this is, it could, you know, border calamity when you have communities where these facilities are going to go, and then we don't have the resources necessary to deal with the impacts. We're way out in front of, you know, a rational, I believe, analysis to determine really what's needed to make this, you know, a viable alternative. And I think we're, we're rushing, and as a consequence, if we miss the mark, say the number is 2 percent or, or 1 and 1/2 percent, and you're burdening these communities additionally without the resources, these communities are already very fragile. I mean, I, I think it's, it's, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful, but I, I just don't see it that way. And I don't see the need to rush to get out in front of this without really knowing. I mean, I don't know where else we've done that, you know, where we've rushed so much and we didn't have the information. But, you know, I just think it's important to note that, I mean, I'm saying that, you know, the impacts, people are going to be screaming, and, and, and that scream needs to be heard, and then there needs to be a response from this council if indeed that, that the burden becomes such that this 1 percent doesn't cover the issues that are caused by, by our actions. So, I mean, it doesn't change my position. You know, I've heard, I've heard my colleagues speak, but I just think it's, I, I think we're moving a little too quickly on this. And either that, or we've just structured it wrong so we don't make sure we cover the impacts. And, and I think it can be very costly to the city.
Very good debate. Let's call the roll on the motion, please.
Okay, we'll start with Member Ashby.
No.
Warren.
Nope.
Harris.
Aye.
Ensign.
Aye.
Chenier.
Aye.
Gera.
Aye.
Jennings.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
And the mayor.
Aye.
Motion passes 7 to.
Motion passes 7 to 2. Very good. Thank you for a very good debate. Thought we would have unanimous votes for four years, but didn't, didn't happen.
Now, we got three years and so many weeks of it.
Yeah. Okay. That's excellent. So, we're going to go to public comment, but before we do, because I know there's a lot of public comment about the homeless issue, I, I wanted to maybe do my council idea and question first, two things, then we'll go to the public comment, if that's okay. First of all, I want to report back to the council about my trip to DC. The United States, the, the Conference of Mayors, United States Conference of Mayors, I attended Monday and Tuesday. And I want to thank the council again for, and the staff, for your courtesy in agreeing to switch the meeting to Thursday night. We'll try to minimize that. It enabled me to attend the meeting. I can report to you that I'm glad I went. Met with Senator Feinstein, with Senator Harris, with Congresswoman Matsui's staff to try to align our city agenda with the new reality in Washington, DC. In addition, I met with a, a number of the country's mayors, and it will be beneficial to us, in the same way that Mayor Johnson sort of used those relationships in a way that benefited Sacramento, learned a lot about how other cities are approaching economic development, and youth, and homelessness. And it's always interesting to see, you're not alone, many of the same challenges, but it, it was worthwhile, and I appreciate, again, your flexibility in allowing me to attend and then allowing me to come back and preside over the meeting here. On this homeless issue, gentleman died last night. It's not the first time. We saw the, the numbers, the report that came out a month ago. A lot of conversation appropriate about this topic, and I know I feel, as I know you all feel, a great sense of urgency here. Over the last several weeks, we, of course, opened a warming center together with the county. We've opened the Stanford Settlement for additional shelter. Howard and his staff, Emily Halken, are multitasking, not only to prepare for our joint meeting on the 31st of January with the county, which will center more on longer-term and permanent solutions, but also trying to increase the inventory of emergency shelter combined with triage so that we can get people off the streets, off the riverbank, into shelter. And so, consistent with that, I'd like to ask each of the members to do what we're already doing internally. We're evaluating every public building within the city to see if it might be suitable for additional shelter. And I would ask the members to please talk to your constituents and your community leaders about available space in your districts so that we can come back together and present more options. And I'm not talking about three weeks from now, talking about by next week. The winter has been harsh, and it will continue to be. And so, if we can create more inventory together, beginning next week to continue what we've done with the center, with the warming center, and with, and with the Stanford Settlement, then we will help more people and bring more people inside. It, you step back, and, and the community is compassionate, and we've asked the faith community to do a lot. They're doing a lot with this winter sanctuary, but it's becoming increasingly clear to me that, that it's got to be our role and responsibility as well, in addition to the county. That's why people come here every week. So, we have the controversies about the camping ordinance, and I get that, so I, Councilmember Warren, you know, is pushing, but it's, it's coming from everywhere and from every corner. And so, the rational response here is for us to continue what we started and to create more emergency shelter with triage, and to do it with the county where we can, but to do as much of it as we can here in this city. So, I'd ask all of you to do that. When we come back next week, we continue to work with the city manager, and we increase the number of beds. Thank you. Let's go to the public testimony. Yes, Councilmember?
I, I apologize for stepping out of turn. I, I just want to say that I too am sorry to hear about the tragedy. I would normally stay. I do not make a habit of leaving early from the council meetings, but moving this meeting to a Thursday night was a little bit problematic for me. I did everything I could.
You did great.
To arrange my life, to be able to stay as long as I possibly could. But I have been mitigating my kids via text for an hour and 15 minutes.
No apology necessary.
So, I think I'm going to need to head out now, and I apologize for missing the comments. The only public, the only council comment I have is that we had a wonderful event today on gender equity, but because we plan on presenting on that item next Tuesday, I'll fill everybody, and then on what the outcomes were. Thank you all so much, and I beg your indulgence.
Great debate. No apology at all. Thank you very much, Councilmember Ashby. Very good. Let's go to the public testimony here.
Okay, we're going to start with Wanda, and then Richard Owen, and McWorthy. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Steinberg, and thank you, council members. Again, I'm co-chair of lead, but we wanted to talk a little bit about this homelessness issue. I also come to you as an educator who has served at every level of education, from elementary school through high school through superintendent. I recall being at Grant High School and having over 150 homeless kids back in the 80s. At Sacramento High School, we had over 90-something homeless kids. Then I hear from the principal at Sac, at Grant High School here just a couple of days ago, that he has over 100 homeless kids right now. This is a moral imperative for us to get this right and to do it quickly. And I want to urge you either to do what Alan Warren is talking about or something better very quickly. So, I appreciated your comments, Mr. Mayor, about the sense of urgency about this. But I also want to encourage you to work with your local superintendents and schools to get an accurate number of how many homeless children are out there as well. I talked to several superintendents, and I know that they're eager to talk to you about their, their data. Unfortunately, the superintendent of Sac City won't be with us. He's leaving us pretty soon, but there are other folks out here that you can coalesce around. But it's an issue that's affecting schools, it's affecting our, our communities, and I urge you to, to just really push on this issue and get it done. If you're not going to do the short-term fix, I know you don't want to make this a tent city for a lot of different people, but if you don't have a better solution, you need to do that or something better as quick as possible. Thank you.
McWorthy? Following Mac will be Pastor Gainesborough.
We heard a lot of noise here today. Really wasn't about nothing. Now, you said, "Respect your police department," and your governor and mayor said, "We're not going to respect fellow law." I'm going to be part of cleaning this swamp. I'm drafting letters now to tell them, right through these agendas, the reason you have homeless because of you abused money. This city abused money. Block grants, you abused that money years ago. Now, when we look at the black people to develop something they own, ain't nothing been done, have it? Why? Because you put on the panel all players, and people been to the Board of Education. Those not business. Those not business people. Sociology and political science is not business majors people. That's the reason you talk about your hiring. We know what you're doing. The people that they're going to be, the pressure on is who here illegal is Japanese and Chinese people, and that going to affect your education. That's what Trump have to, that's the reason the governor high-hoed. That's, Mexico's not going to be defended. That's where he going to lose that money. That's where you got people here overstating their visa, Japanese, Chinese people.
Let's start, start, let's not start calling out people by race.
Look, this, this is a freedom of, this is freedom of speech, and I can call out who got.
25 seconds.
Freedom, freedom of speech, and you are the garbage that you can't move to the city.
Pastor Gainesborough?
Very good.
Following, following the pastor is Kim Church. Following Kim Church is David Andre.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. To the contrary, you are a gift, Mayor Steinberg, to the city of Sacramento, and so are every one of you on the council. To the contrary of the, my predecessor there. If I could show a couple images here in my limited time, if you can enlarge that or focus it to show, this is a lady who was drowning in a flood, and a rescuer with a rope attached to him dove in. This is the situation of the homeless outside there on the sidewalk tonight, last Tuesday night, and will continue until we have adequate shelter. I applaud your saying that we need more shelter. This picture here broke my heart, if it could be on both overheads. This is after the heavy rain last Tuesday and Thursday and Sunday night, the homeless down on Ahern. At least their tents were not taken away from them, but drying out their, if you'll look there, drying out those things. We need shelter every night, not just when it's 40 degrees or colder. And I know that's in your heart, we just need an emergency action on that. This is a picture of the pit stop here. I drove by there last Wednesday before going to the Continuum of Care, which is doing some good work with the 20 or 30 organizations moving along. But with 20,000 flushes in six months, which averages out to about 3,600 per month, it's gone. It's gone. What do we expect the homeless to do if there is no public restroom? I mean, what do we expect them to do? We're giving them no option. Manny Pacquiao, in the fight of the century, out of his own wallet, built 1,000 homes for the poor and the homeless in his district because he was voted to power to help those who have no power. Let's do it. You're on the right track. Let's move with this. God bless you.
Thanks, Pastor. Okay, next.
Kim Church?
I think she left.
Okay, next.
Is Kim Church left? Okay, David Andre. Following David Andre is James Clark.
I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing up the man that died in the storm yesterday. When that man was dying, there were 15, at least 15, police officers out the arena watching some of us do a peaceful First Amendment protest. I, as soon as I heard the guy died, I thought, my God, if some of them cops had been dispatched out here to give up blankets, or maybe even hot soup, that man would have lived, and maybe some other people's life would have been better. But that didn't happen. The priority for our city was to secure the arena and secure that, that venue while a man died directly outside this wall right here.
His name, by the way, was Mike Nunez, AKA Turbo. He had a name, a real human being.
Thank you.
May he rest in peace.
Yep. May he, may he rest in peace. Sacramento, going back to the police thing, the second highest police shootings, and so much money going to the arena, going to these ideas to make money, yet people are dying in the cold from wet. This is like a third world problem we continue to have, and I'm very happy with the mayor and city council that we're addressing these issues as quickly as possible. But unfortunately for, for Mr. Nunez, it wasn't quick enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, David. Next. Okay, Mr. Clark.
Following James Clark is Marina Ordas.
I want to start off by saying thank you for saying his name. Michael Nunez died last night around 8:30, right outside City Hall, right here on the H Street side. And this makes me wonder, you know, the day before this storm hit, because I'm in contact with a lot of people to pay attention to what's going on in the city, and they let me know when they're seeing homeless people moved around. And the day before, I was getting flooded with sweeps going around the city, and people's tents and blankets being confiscated and thrown away. And it just makes me wonder, you know, and then I find out that somebody died last night. You know, two days ago, they're taking everybody's blankets, taking everybody's tents, and tonight, somebody's dead. And why? Because we still have a camping ordinance. And we can talk about this housing thing. I, I love the idea of housing, but we've been hearing that for 30 years. And for 30 years, people's blankets and life essential supplies are being confiscated under an ordinance that says it's illegal to possess them. And then last week, when we have a council member actually propose a moratorium, he's met with a very adverse reaction, and almost insults in some of the statements that were there, and they're a little underlying in a way, because all of a sudden, oh, you're taking away from the solution of housing by ending the suffering now while we work on that. And that's what we've been asking for, for the last 30 years? Isn't not work on housing, but in the meantime, show us that you actually are going to do what all these other council members before you that said the same thing you're saying now haven't been able to do. Alleviate the suffering now so that people's life-sustaining supplies aren't continually taken from. taken from them, so that while this process of getting housing shapes up, they're not suffering in the cold, their life isn't in danger, especially considering that a trans person's not going to be able to get into most shelters. A person that has a dog isn't going to be able to get into a shelter. A family can't get into a shelter. We've already had to turn away a family with kids last Tuesday with no place to send them.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Let's fix this, please.
Thank you.
Marina? Is Marina here?
Marina? Okay, next.
Lorraine Brown. Following Lorraine is Danielle with no last name.
Take your time.
I'm limping because I haven't been able to get any medical, dental, haven't been able to make a phone call, get phone service, the basics. And anybody that knows me, I've been coming here for five years since 2012. Anyone that knows me previously knows I am a holder of the law. I love our laws. Unfortunately, in the 90s and the 80s, our laws were suspended, deregulation, the Fair Trade Agreement deregulated and took away all restrictions, and cartels filled in the blanks, and we're dealing with organized crime with insurance, military, UN, medical corrections. What else? Housing. So I am a supporter of Donald Trump and for very various reasons. I think I probably have information the rest of you are not privy to. We need our laws enforced. And this yellow journalism of downing our country and being alarmists and 1984 garbage and aliens landing is all a distraction, and gender equality and special groups and teams. I am sick of that. We have a law that protected everyone, and I worked in that government that enforced the law. And we had housing, and we had emergency care, and we had treatment, and we had jobs. And now, Mayor Steinberg, I'm hoping that, and I'm believing, and maybe we can make a bet on it, I'd love to do it, that we won't be so sparse next year, that we'll have our small industries back, our jobs, our tax base, and people will be gainfully employed and be able to prosper and have a house. But when you take away their house and their job, they decompensate, and they have mental illness issues. And it's many studies on that. And so to stigmatize them and say that they're homeless, we need to classify, are they corrections people?
Thank you.
Are they alcohol, drug? Are they homeless because of economic reasons? And we really need to not lump them all together. That's like very archaic. We're beyond that.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Danielle?
Danielle?
No Danielle. Okay, the next one is Guy, G-Y-916.
Coming down.
Following Guy is Jeffrey Tardakia.
Please state your name for the record, if you would, please.
Good to see you, Mayor, and good to see a former professional football player for the Raiders sitting in your seat. Can I have your overhead on? In the last few months, the headlines... Frustrated. Armed civilians. Asians. Asians worried for their lives. Citizen patrols. Sacramento is too scary, says a Chinese immigrant. Community vigilante. Now, in that article with the vigilante, here's some of the highlights. One... And this has been going on for generations. Lackluster response by the police.
Sir, you have 40 seconds, so please tell us what you want us to hear.
Thank you. My... There's a 14th Amendment, equal protection. And I'm asking the police to do their job, but more specifically, I'm asking them to do the job in regards to my mom, the embezzlement, and murder.
Okay. If we can help you, if a member of our staff can help you regarding your mom or situation you talked about, we'd be happy to help.
Okay.
Thank you.
I feel like, because I'm Asian, I'm not getting the response.
Okay. We'll follow up with a member of my staff tomorrow, and we'll try to make sure that you get, that we respond in a way that...
Thank you, Mayor.
Responsive, okay? Thank you so much.
Jeffrey?
Go ahead.
Mayor Steinberg? I'm still working on that part through there. And surely, think of Carmen Guía for my name, and it'll probably help you pronounce it. Yes, I was born here in Sacramento, but many other adventures ensued. Correct me, Mayor, if I'm wrong, is not next week they're going to be a count of the homeless going forward? I believe that's taking place next week, of they're going out and physically counting. I have participated in the Winter Sanctuary Program. I have been, as should we say, in, should we say, food pantries and a few other areas and aspects. But for the city, as it used to be a 29th and, should we say, J Street problem of the homeless and north, then it become a county problem out on Howell Avenue and other areas. I'll leave that subject and hope that you people come up with some solutions. But I am here to talk to you about is in Sacramento County, is 40 years ago, you had the Greyhound bus down there on L Street. Think about how long it's been taken away from there and moved up to Richard Street's. And neither the L Street or the I Street and other maps for Sacramento still have that sitting in there, that Greyhound is located on where that formerly location was. Can we get those maps corrected? It would be nice if it would say that the Greyhound is up there at Richards Boulevard and that for people that come into the Amtrak station continually have a means of knowing where, should we say, the Greyhound is for public transportation.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Oh, dear. Okay.
Time is up.
Yep.
Thank you so much, though.
Okay, last two speakers. Robert Copeland and Michael, is it Voig? Michael Voig? Okay, so Robert.
Well, I'd like to welcome Mayor Steinberg to his office here and to the city council. Mr. Warren here has come, City Councilmember Warren has a great idea, put a moratorium on anti-campin' ordinance, and I hope my council member does it and all council members do it. Because how many deaths could have been preventable like the one last night or last year or earlier this year? How many could be preventable if the anti-campin' ordinance was repealed? And we had more housing? I'm talking not, I'm not talking slumlord housing, I'm talking adequate housing. I was at ACE meeting tonight, and we was ahead of brought up a few issues. Housing, homeless issues, health care, slumlords. Fix the city. I like, you know what? If you don't fix the city, I know there are four people on city council that I'd like to see recalled, including my own, and I live in Midtown.
No threats. Come on, tell us what you want to do.
I don't threaten nobody.
It's okay, just say, tell us what you want to do.
I don't threaten nobody. It's like I like seeing them recalled.
Tell us what you want us to do better.
More housing. More jobs, better transportation, and you know the arena in the memorial oratorium and convention center? Maybe more people can go to them if they didn't pay so much money in rent, like myself. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Michael?
Michael is our last...
Yes, last speaker.
Last speaker. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members. This is a very hard-working council, very, very hard-working. I've observed this council for about three months now. Been to every meeting since about the middle of October, November, and I think various council members can attest to that. Mayor, I know you've seen me at every meeting since you've been here. And I didn't plan to speak this evening, but something that, two things that you said just kind of sparked something in me and something that Councilmember Warren was trying to get done, and maybe there's a combination here. Everybody's frustrated. I hear it in a lot of the public comments, just general frustration. You called for each of the members to locate or try to find some appropriate venues as emergency shelter. And it occurred to me that maybe there's... Is there a possibility that somebody like the National Guard could provide the army-style large tents that are, oh, I don't know, they're probably 20 by 30 or whatever feet, that you could have some infrared or, you know, the propane-powered heaters and cots? That would accommodate some of the issues because you could have dogs there that, you know, as long as they're controlled. It avoids some of the issue of having just tents everywhere. You might be able to do something with porta-potties, I don't know. And maybe there could be one of these in strategic places in the various districts. There'd be a place to put one of these tents. One patrol car could provide security for some of these things, and I see my time is up.
Your time is up, but I thank you for your thoughtful comments. We're reading everything. Okay. Council ideas and questions. Councilmember Gedda.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just a couple announcements and one issue here. One, I want to encourage everyone to come out to the 2017 Little Saigon Tet Parade on Saturday, January 28, and the Lunar Flower Festival and Tet Festival this January 28 and 29. The festival's all weekend. The Vietnamese-American community of Sacramento and the Greater Sacramento-Vietnamese-American Chamber of Commerce will be hosting this on Stockton Boulevard. It's a great opportunity. Hope all our council members will join us on the parade. Also want to put on your calendar on that Sunday also the grand opening of the Dharma Center on January 29, from 1 o'clock to 3 o'clock at 3111 Wiseman Drive. This is a, the community's getting together through Buddhist meditation classes and retreats and workshops that can be done there. The last thing is more of an issue about our alternative mode commuting option program, the AMCO program. And it's brought to my attention that when folks participate in this program, which is, I was going to make this comment during our Vision Zero item, but we had a long council night to get through, so I held it here to the end. And if we really want to encourage people to participate in transit, carpool, or bicycling, I think we want to make this alternative mode commuter option program a little better. Let me say this, that the way that this works is you get a, you purchase this little card, but it has an expiration date, and you can purchase up to $96 worth for the, for about 12 of these. But if it expires, and say like last year where it doesn't rain and you use your cycle all the time, you can't get your money back or exchange these. So at the very least, I'd like to see if we can find a way so that folks who have these cards that they've paid for with our AMCO system, so that if they maybe only need to drive once or twice a year, that they can actually get a, either, not necessarily a refund, but at least a replacement of these. Apparently, people have tried to go to the counter and do that, and they've said that it's not possible. It's kind of a use-it-or-lose-it system, but it says nothing like that in our online messaging. So we just shouldn't punish people for being good commuters, and it's a good program.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Eric. Councilmember Vice Mayor Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Carr and I had the opportunity to cosponsor a job fair in the Meadowview community at the Sam and Bonnie Pinnell Meadowview Community Center today, and I'm happy to announce that we had well over 100 people who were there signing up for positions of cashier, sales, customer service, freight, and all the other types of seasonal and part-time jobs that they have. So if you missed it, I want to let you know that there is another opportunity tomorrow, and it'll happen between 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. Home Depot will be at the Valley High North Laguna Library from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m., located at 7,400 Imagination Parkway. They're going to be there with all of their staff and all of their administration, interviewing, taking resumes, looking for opportunities for people to be able to go to work immediately. And if you can't make that for any reason, you can also apply online at careers.homedepo.com. Once again, that's careers.homedepo.com. So there's wonderful opportunity. Home Depot is committed to hiring at least 200 employees in these two days, and so please get the word out to any of your friends and/or some of your children who are looking for work.
Excellent. Glad to hear it. Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of announcements, and then I wanted to close in memoriam when we close out the meeting, but I wanted to express my gratitude and thanks to the members of the Martin Luther King Committee that organized the march in District 2. Daryl Roberts, Kim Davies, Darius Henson, the principal of Grant High School, and others who organized a very successful march at Grant High School. And then I want to thank the organizers and my wife, who organized a very successful health fair at Grant High School. After the march, the health fair was, it was the fourth annual health fair. It was themed Mind, Body, and Soul, very successful. They provided free health screenings, mammograms, sports physicals. There was voter registration booth. There was a reentry assistance program, mental health discussions, financial planning, and they also had reading of books to some of our younger members of our community. I'm told that there were approximately 3,500 people that came between the march and the health fair. So we had a very successful Martin Luther King Day. And again, I want to thank all of those that came out to celebrate, but also those that helped organize the event. Thank you.
Thank you. By the way, the march, both, I wasn't at the Norsec march, but from Oak Park and City College. I mean, to me, it's one of the best days of the year. Just really is incredible spirit. Just got to keep that spirit all year. Remember, remember Dr. King in that day. Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have two items. One is a follow-up for the city manager. I had requested late last year a moratorium on lot splits where historic properties could be compromised, and I'd just like an update from the community development department about that. The second thing is, in honor of Michael Nunez, I'd request that our council adjourn in his memory tonight.
Thank you, Steve. That's very, very appropriate. That's all we have on tonight's agenda. Thank you for a very productive meeting. You had to adjourn memory. I'm sorry, Alan.
Also, we lost one of our true, our true American geniuses and historians in Dr. Kevin Starr.
Oh, yes, I knew Dr. Starr.
Who I'm sure our mayor knows.
I knew him very, very well. I knew him very, very well, yes.
And, you know, he was an unlikely friend of mine, but he had befriended me and often would invite me to San Francisco. We would go to lunch, and he would come here, and we would meet. Had a chance to spend a lot of time with him, and I was shocked. I was on the march, in fact, when I heard that he had passed. And in fact, there was a project that we were working on together, and so I was very shocked to hear that he had passed. But also, I'd like to adjourn the meeting in memory of Mr. Nunez as well as Dr. Starr.
Very, very good.
Mr. Mayor, I just, you know, since we're here already this late, but I do want to add to that on Mr. Kevin Starr. And when I came in through the fellowship in the state capitol, there was one thing that stuck with me, and his just immense amount of history reminding us about how immigrants of California made this state, everyone combined, and he was not apologetic about that part of history and what we could learn from that. And I think what we can learn from the mistakes, we went in through that process, so I also would like to adjourn with Kevin Starr and also Mr. Nunez.
Great legacy. Thank you all very much. Meeting's adjourned.